Meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Orders. Council members and staff are participating from remote locations. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting live tonight on wave channel eighteen and online through those cities website as noted on the agenda. I did receive four emailed comments which were forwarded to council prior to the meeting. Those are all in relation to agenda items. If you would like to participate in live, uh, public comment via the Zoom platform, please refer to the agenda for instructions. Note, public comments are limited to three minutes and the mayor will begin the meeting momentarily.
Welcome to the December eighth, twenty twenty regular meeting of the City of Lincoln, City Council, Redevelopment Superior Agency and Public Financing Authority. I call this meeting to order. Roll call. City Clerk, may we please have the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Andriata.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Joyner. Councilmember Silhaj.
Here.
Incoming Councilmember, uh, William Lauritsen.
Here.
And Mayor Carlsken.
Here.
Item number three report from closed session. We had no closed session, so there is nothing to report. Item number four is Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, Mayor, if council members could please mute themselves and turn off the video prior to the pledge. Thank you.
My granddaughter Quincy Leonard, third grader Lincoln Crossing School will lead us in the pledge tonight. Quincy?
After me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Quincy. We appreciate it. You can mute yourself now. The next item on the agenda is to certify the election. We do that by adopting Resolution twenty twenty dash two one eight, certifying the official canvas of the election returns for the general municipal election held November third, twenty twenty. May I have a motion to certify the election?
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second? Do I have a second?
Yes, Mayor, I believe the second was from, uh, Councilmember Silhaj.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Uh, I have a motion and a second.
Yes. Yes. Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Silhaj.
Aye.
Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner.
Aye.
And Mayor Carlsken.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is Agenda Modifications. The, uh, City Clerk has requested we swap the order of presentations. Does anybody have any other modifications to the agenda thi- this evening? If not, can I have consensus on swapping the presentation order? Any dissent?
No, that's fine.
No dissent.
Okay, we'll go forward then. Item number seven, Presentations.
Yes, Mayor. We will start with the oath of offices, so, uh, we will start, begin with our newly elected city treasurer, Richard Plural. We will be, uh, showing the videos that were done earlier this week.
I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, next up, we have, uh, newly elected city council member for District Three, Paul Joyner.
I state your name.
I, Paul Joyner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Okay, next we have newly elected city council member for District Four, William Lauritsen.
I state your name.
I, William Amel Lauritsen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Next, we have newly elected city council member for District Five, Dan Carlsken.
I state your name.
I, Dan Carlsken.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Next, we have incoming Vice Mayor Holly Andriata.
I state your name.
I, Holly Andriata.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And finally, we have the incoming Mayor Alyssa Silhaj.
I state your name.
I, Alyssa Silhaj.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to adopt Proclamations twenty two, twenty twenty dash nine, recommending the outgoing Treasurer Gerald Harner and Proclamation twenty twen- ten, commending outgoing Councilmember Peter Gilbert. City, uh, Clerk, would you please, uh, read uh, Proclamation twenty twenty dash nine?
Yes, Mayor. Whereas Gerald Jerry Harner was elected as Lincoln's City Treasurer in two thousand sixteen and has instituted many new policies to bring the position in compliance with government requirements and overall raising its prominence. And whereas Jerry began his public service from nineteen sixty through nineteen eighty, serving the Red Cross, rising to National Representative for the California Nevada Utah Region. And following that was a Northern Californian manager for United Way. And whereas Jerry had a broad background of successful financial experience from his career as a certified financial planner, registered investment advisor, National Association of Securities Dealer Registered Representative and variable annuity, annuity, life and disability representative. And whereas Jerry is a longtime Rotarian, serving as Carmel Valley's Rotary President from nineteen ninety seven to nineteen ninety eight, when he began one of many humanitarian trips to Haiti. And whereas after moving to Lincoln in two thousand five, Jerry decided to get involved and served on the city's Economic Development Committee prior to deciding to run for elected office. And whereas Jerry has served as the city's Fiscal and Investment Oversight Committee Chair, one of his many duties as city treasurer, and if selected by city council plans to continue his service to the city in whatever capacity is needed. And whereas Jerry and his wife Marlene raised five children and have many grandchildren that they plan on visiting now that his duties as city treasurer have been completed. Now therefore be it resolved on this eighth day of December twenty twenty that the city council of the City of Lincoln does hereby commend Jerry Harner for his dedicated service that has contributed, contributed immensely to the city's growth and vitality. Next, I will read the, uh, proclamation twenty twenty ten and then we'll take a vote on both. Uh, whereas Peter Gilbert was called to public service early in life when he served in the U.S. Army in the Intelligence Corps, where he was responsible for all finance operations for the Intelligent Corps Chief of Staff Worldwide. And whereas Pete, Peter returned to California to start his business career and after several years with Rockwell International was recruited by Wells Fargo Bank. And whereas Peter was selected by the Foster City Citywide Political Convention to run for recalled council seats. And whereas in nineteen eighty, Peter was reelected to a full four-year term and then retired in nineteen eighty four after serving one term as mayor for Foster City. And whereas while serving on the Foster City Council, Peter was very active in Bay Area wide government organizations such as the League of California Cities Peninsula Division, where he served as the president representing thirty-five plus cities. And whereas Peter retired from the bank as a senior vice president and had several startup ventures, including three internet companies before moving to Lincoln. And whereas after moving to Lincoln, Peter served two terms on the Sun City Lincoln Hills Board of Directors and on the Placer County Grand Jury. And whereas Peter was elected to city council in December two thousand twelve and was subsequently reelected for another four-year term in two thousand sixteen and served as mayor in two thousand seventeen. And whereas Peter's leadership has contributed to many of the city's key capital improvement projects such as the Highway sixty-five bypass, regional sewer, Lincoln Boulevard improvements, Nelson Lane widening, reclaimed water. And whereas a resurgence of development has occurred during Peter's tenure with such projects as Cal ISO, In-N-Out Burger, and entitlements of General Plan Villages One, Five, and Seven. Now therefore be it resolved on this eighth day of December twenty twenty that the city council of the City of Lincoln does hereby commend Peter Gilbert for his dedicated service that has contributed immensely to the city's growth and vitality. Additionally, Assemblyman Kevin Kylie also honored Peter with an assembly resolution. Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt?
Mr. Mayor, we honor, yeah, that have the privilege to, uh, make the motion to approve both of those proclamations for our outgoing treasurer and for our outgoing uh, council member and former mayor.
A second?
I have a motion and a second.
Before we vote, can I just say thank you to both of them?
You certainly can.
I miss Peter. You too, Lois. Thank you so much.
Before we go to the vote, I would also like to thank both of the gentlemen for their long-term friendship. Ever since, uh, they've been in Lincoln, we've been friends. Jerry has done a tremendous job in making the role of the treasurer in the city a significant role from where it has been in the past. And of course, Peter and his mentoring to all of us, particularly to me over the years, has been deeply, deeply appreciated. So thank you both.
Yeah, allow me to, to, to second that for both of them, if I may, and, and Peter, it has been, and Jerry, it's been a great honor to serve with both of you, and as you say, Dan, it's been a great learning experience. Uh, but I also want to thank Lois because I think a lot of folks don't realize that when we serve, so do our spouses. And, and they go through a lot uh, and sacrifice a lot for our community. So thank you, Lois, uh, for allowing Peter to work with us and to serve our community.
Uh, that's exactly what I was gonna say. Paul, you stole my thunder. I wanted to thank Lois for all her years of service and dedication and everything that she does to, uh, keep Lincoln Hills a hopping place and, and the women's club and everything else that she does and putting up with long hours. So thank you.
I think we all know the truth. She actually kicks Peter out of the house and he has to go find something to do.
Yeah, I wish. I was gonna comment on that. I wonder what she's gonna have him do for the next forty years of his life.
Also, I wanna thank, I also wanna thank Peter for his advice, you know, as, as a new council member.
Okay, well, we probably ought to vote, Dan.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. Uh, so Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Lauritsen.
Yes.
Councilmember Silhaj.
Yes.
The Mayor Carlsken.
Yes. Next item, actually, that's the last vote I'll take as mayor. I want to kind of virtually and very happily throw the gavel.
Thank you, Dan. Um, it's a little daunting to take the mayor seat after you, so I will do my best not to mess it up. Um, and probably will never be able to quite rise to the legend and that you will be for getting tax share agreements. So thank you for your very, very hard work, and I will try my best to meet the bar that you set.
Mayor Silhaj?
Yes.
May I first congratulate you? And, uh, also, I'd like to share of my congratulations for Bill, Dan, and Paul on your election to the council. And, uh, I wish all of you a continued good fortune for our community. I know you all have and will work hard to see that may, uh, happens for all of us. I wanna let you know a few things. I won't make it a long one. But today, as I do once a month, I went on a site that shows the crime rate in cities, and I've watched that very carefully since I moved here. Out of the four hundred and eighty-two cities, incorporated cities in California, and with one of the smallest law enforcement counts of personnel, we ranked the fourth safest city in California. And I think that really is a testimony to the people, the quality of people that work and live in our community. We don't put up with anything bad and it shows up in the numbers. Uh, we've got a great staff uh, led by Jennifer, who's done a marvelous job finding new direction for us. I wanna compliment our police chief. Thinking back to the time before he got here, uh, things weren't working as well in law enforcement. And now he takes care of law enforcement and fire and does a superb job. We have an outstanding city clerk, an outstanding city engineer. And when you take that kind of quality staff, it makes us that serve in the city look a lot better for, uh, their efforts. So with that, I'm going to end, uh, my short speech, short for me. And, uh, wish you all the best of luck and continued success for the great town of Lincoln. And, uh, have a nice holiday season and a safe holiday season.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
I'm gonna sign off for the last time after forty-three years of public service.
I enjoy it.
And enjoy your retirement. All right, on to, uh, item number eight, public comment. Um, City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Uh, yes, Mayor, we do have one hand raised. Elias Barquette. I apologize if I mispronounced. Go ahead, please. Um, okay. I'm sorry, he, he went away, so I will, I do have another hand raised. Uh, Connie Shiber, please go ahead.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, good evening. This is actually Albert Shiber, uh, Moore Road. Um, I, uh, I'm on my wife's, uh, under her name because, uh, for some reason, it wouldn't let me in tonight. So I've made the comment before that, uh, trying to get on this call is not as easy as, uh, as Hanson makes it appear. Uh, so that's a little frustrating. It's also frustrating that we can't get on until right at six. So if there's an issue, we actually get on late. So uh, I would make a recommendation that you open it up five minutes earlier or so, so we have time to get on, those of us that like to comment. Um, kind of follows in with what I, uh, talked about last week at the uh, workshop you had, um, about shutting people down. Uh, you know, maybe it's a coincidence, maybe not, but uh, it just seems like, uh, the city is getting more and more uh, to where they wanna shut everybody down. Um, and, uh, you know, I gave some examples last week of, uh, Ms. Holly and, uh, Ms. Silhaj, uh, bringing up the Fourth of July or Christmas parade. It's just shut it down. Um, you know, Lincoln Theater Company, just shut it down. Lincoln Skate Park, just shut it down. It just seems like a pattern that's coming more and more uh, apparent or blunt, however you wanna phrase it. Um, and it's kind of frustrating. Uh, for those of us, uh, you know, you want participation, but you, you really don't. So um, you know, and then allegedly, I heard lately that either the city attorney and/or code enforcement was, uh, threatening to shut shut a business down in particular. Um, and so it just goes on and on. So it's very frustrating. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Mayor, we do have another hand raised. Byron Chapman, please go ahead, Mr. Chapman. You're muted.
There we go.
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Feel like the, uh, phone commercial. Uh, again, Byron Chapman, Twelve Bridges, uh, uh, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff. Uh, I too would like to, uh, a couple of items. One, I, I certainly do echo the comments that were, uh, just made by Mr. Shiber. Um, it's, it's amazing nowadays that we want to be heard. Um, over the eight years, we've gone from five minutes to three minutes. Uh, can't wait for the one minute to happen. And it seems just the reversal trend of where we want to go versus where we are. Uh, I certainly would likely at times to have more time to talk about these issues. Uh, since, uh, going viral or virtual, excuse me, um, the meetings have been relatively short. Uh, there have been a couple when it comes to reviewing the budget, uh, possibly presentations, but for the most part, the meetings have been extremely short, and I, I would like the council to take a look at that. Um, because other places have gone from five minutes to three minutes. Uh, I actually know places that you talk up to ten minutes. And the reason for that is they truly want to hear the comments. Uh, from our side of the field, it indeed does sound like you do not want to hear from us. And I would love to sit here and say, uh, Merry Christmas to everyone, which I do. But it's also something that has been a continuing situation, and I would hope that that would improve. Uh, I certainly don't count on it. Uh, the other item is, uh, in one of the November uh, council meetings, I had brought up the issue of uh, there were items and, uh, we were reviewing the monthly investment activity report for the city up through September. And for three months, there was the same set, uh, same, uh, dollar amount up in the upper right-hand column. Uh, I brought that to the council's attention. Uh, I did receive an email back saying that those numbers had been changed. Uh, however, it, it took me a really long time in order to pull up these documents. It should be easier to get to. Uh, the numbers are correct for the, uh, report, however, uh, those numbers have yet to be changed. And so it makes me wonder. Um, I'm, I'm glad that the numbers do check out, but those numbers have not been changed, as I had mentioned. Uh, so with that, I would hope that those two things could happen. Uh, and again, I hope everyone stays safe through the holidays. Thank you very much.
Mayor, we do have another hand raised. Melissa Wagener. Please go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of, um, agree with the other speaker. Um, it is frustrating when things are happening and people aren't heard. Uh, um, like the McBean Skate Park was taken out, and I do wanna say thank you, though, in the long run, it seems like everyone has been, um, helpful and is willing to open the skate park. But I did wanna kind of disagree with him. It does seem like, you know, everything's getting taken away without any kind of input from the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, with that, Mayor, I don't see any other hands raised.
Thank you. All right, so on to item. Uh, they're both the next item for the consent agenda. Uh, does anyone, oh, sorry, all matters on the consent agenda are considered. Uh, does anyone, oh, sorry, all matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council or resident requests a specific item to be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Any items removed will be considered after the remainder of the consent agenda. Do any of my colleagues wish to remain, remove an item from the consent file?
No.
Oh. Okay, see none. Um, how about from the public? Have any public requested to pull an item?
Uh, I do see one hand raised. Mr. Chapman.
Uh, yes, Gwen, thank you. Thank you, uh, mayor. I would like to pull two items, nine G as in golf and nine A and B.
Alright, um, so pulling those, can we have a motion for the remainder?
I move.
Wait a second.
Of the consent agenda.
And then um, city clerk, it will be a roll call vote due to the.
Yes, okay, council member Carl Skin.
Yeah.
Council member Lauritsen.
Yes.
Council member Andriata.
Yes.
Council member Joyner.
Yes.
And mayor Silhaj.
Yes. Alright, so on to nine A, uh, approval of the minutes of October twenty-seven, twenty-twenty, regular November third, twenty-twenty work session and November ten, twenty-twenty regular city council meetings. Ms. Scanlon, did you want to take that?
Sure, so those are um, basically just the action minutes from those meetings. Um, I don't, if Mr. Chapman, I will go ahead and allow him to speak. Go ahead, Mr. Chapman.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, what I actually wanted to pull was nine uh, G and also nine A B as opposed to two separates.
Oh, I see. I thought you meant A, B, and D. Okay. So, very long consent agenda, that was my misunderstanding. How do we?
So we should, we should um, go ahead and and, you know, open for a staff report, item nine G as in golf.
I'm saying, so I don't, we don't need to do anything for the vote because I misunderstood it, correct? So we just move on. Okay, just want to be sure. Alright.
I think, I think we're clear at this point.
Okay, perfect. So nine G, adopt resolution twenty-twenty-two-twenty approving the city council appointments to the city of Lincoln committees, commission and boards, and the external joint power agencies, regional boards and committees, and receiving local appointment list as required by the California Government Code five-four-nine-seven-zero-matic. That's awesome, Ms. Scanlon.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So uh, each year when we have the mayoral rotation, we do have uh, city council appointments on our regional boards as well as on our uh, city boards and committees. Um, we are, we have not had a chance to interview for the city committees. So we do have the council appointees, but we don't yet have those. So those will come at a later date in January, but this right here is just showing who is going to be appointed to which uh, committee, both city and regionally. With that, I will um, open that back up to um, Byron Chapman.
Mr. Chapman?
You need to unmute yourself. Mr. Chap- okay.
There we go.
And there he is.
I'm sorry, I just clicked you again, so try it one more time.
There, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, air, uh, council members and city staff, again Byron Chapman. Uh, on nine G, I was going through the uh, packet and looking at the items. There were five pages. Uh, I'll read from page number two, just an excerpt, and then I will talk to you about page four. Page two, uh, at the top, it talks about report accountability. It states that uh, this staff report has been reviewed by the city attorney for legal uh, sufficiency and by the city manager for content. So then if I move to page four, which is actually a list uh, of the various uh, boards and committees. And if you go down to number twelve, which is uh, Placer Mosquito Vector Control District Board of Trustees, you'll find the line where it says incumbent, and I say Mr. Peter Gilbert in two thousand and sixteen, and as you move yourself over to the third line up at the top, it says twenty-twenty-one appointment. It also has Mr. Peter Gilbert. Is he just hanging around? I know that uh, that's probably not the case, but I wanted to point this out. Thank you.
Thank you. So uh, the mosquito vector and abatement control is a special district, and so those terms are separate from your appointment to city council. So his term on that is not expired yet. So he will continue to serve out the remainder of his term.
Well, it was my understanding that uh, unless you were on the council, you could not serve this particular.
So for, for, for a special district, it's an independent special district, that is not the case. So his, any appointment from council to that is, is separate from their appointment or election to council. They're, they're not connected once you've been appointed to it.
So madam mayor, maybe I can help out here. It's, it's not required that that role be filled by an elected official. Typically, we've done that, but we've also uh, in the past, taken Linda Stackpool, who was a council member, uh, and after she uh, failed to get reelected, requested to remain uh, on the mosquito vector board and, and she did so for a number of years. So, so this is not uncommon. Uh, and Peter requested to stay on. I think that's a good choice for us.
Yeah, and it's according to their bylaws. It's, it's, it's an, it's not out of the norm. For another, for any other appointment, it would be. But for that one, it is not. Can I?
Thank you very much.
Is there any other public comment?
No, mayor, I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Uh, motion to approve the item.
Have a second?
A second.
Can you take the roll?
Yes, mayor. Council member Joyner.
Yes.
Council member Andriata.
Yes.
Council member Ca- Carl Skin.
Yeah.
Council member Lauritsen.
Yes.
And mayor Silhaj.
Yes. Alright, moving on to A B. My mistake earlier. Let me get there. Alright, so nine A B, adopt resolution twenty-twenty-two-four-one, authorizing the funding request for the F fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Beverage container recycling city county payment program. That's Mr. Leffler, if you'd like to give us a brief report.
Yes, thank you, uh, mayor Silhaj and city council. This is a fairly routine item we go through every year. Uh, the city of Lincoln gets uh, grant funding from Cal Recycle, so state agency. And what that goes towards is our advertising and outreach efforts for um, for recycling so that we can continue to ma- maintain and reach, achieve our goal, our re- recycling goals uh, within the state of California. So this is a fairly routine item and requires city council approval in order to submit the uh, the grant funding documents.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Scanlon, you want to open up for comment?
Yes, mayor. So um, Mr. Chapman, please go ahead. Unmute yourself, please.
Uh, thank you, Gwen. Again, Byron Chapman. Uh, mayor, when I read through the um, the packet for this particular item, it seems as if, uh, and I, and I heard the city engineer say that it's a rather routine scenario. Doing and getting the roughly twelve thousand dollars in order to put more information out there on the website and that sort of thing. And I did take the time to look at the website and see what was there. Uh, and it is very, very helpful. Uh, it's, it's very good information. However, I want to go a little bit further with this and I'm, I'm concerned or would like to know why isn't that we don't take this twelve thousand dollars and whatever money is that we can get in the future and actually go to, I mean, a town of our size not to have a, what most biz, or excuse me, most cities have, which is my, usually the color of blue to signify that your various types of uh, bottles, cans, so forth. Things that we do indeed want to keep out of the landfill, that we do not have that service. Uh, when I first moved to town, uh, I called about that. I thought maybe I needed an additional bin that I did not receive. And the word that I'd received at that point was it's, it's not necessary because our employees out at the uh, the landfill uh, go through those items and pull those items out, and therefore we don't need this kind of scenario. I, 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 I've seen and talked to a lot of cities on this particular issue. And where we are with recycling and trying to keep, as the comments state, these sorts of things out of our landfill, people generally, I believe, if they know that there's a bin that can go out to the curb that's going to pick the items up as they go through their house, it's found to be very, very uh, helpful, uh, and certainly positive. However, when you leave it to the individual to do the recycling for themselves, uh, oftentimes they're busy doing other things. They don't want to put it in a bag or in a box or wherever you might put it. And it piles up and it piles up, and then someone either takes it down to get it uh, turned in, recycle it, or whatever. I'm just wondering why the city of Lincoln does not have that sort of program to where those items could truly be not finding themselves up in the landfill. So with that, uh, again, the twelve thousand dollars, I know it's probably a small amount in order to start that program. But I find it really hard in this day and age that we do not have a program where we can indeed recycle and make it a little bit easier for everyone to do so. Thank you very much.
Before I bring it back to staff, do we have any further public comment?
No, mayor, we do not.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Leffler, did you want to respond?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Silhaj. Um, within the city of Lincoln, actually within Placer County, we have what is referred to as one big bin. So what that does, you throw all your household waste into the one, into the one ninety-gallon toter. That goes out to the MRF and it goes down a, down uh, sorting equipment and down conveyors. Some materials are separated out mechanically, some are separated out manually. Basically, with this type of method, we can get, and quite frankly, Mr. Chapman even br- brought up the idea of people who just don't bring it to the curb. Well, with this happens, everybody's taking their garbage out to the curb every week because you don't want that piling up on your side yard. That gets out to the, out to the MRF, M- Materials Recovery Facility, and it gets separated there. We can achieve a higher rate of separation and diversion this manner because what we're not missing out on, if we're doing curbside recycling, the people who just get lazy and just throw it all in the garbage, then it goes, just gets hauled out to the MRF and dumped in, into a big hole in the ground. The other thing that this allows us to do, we do get customers at the MRF and with WATMA, uh, Western Placer Waste Management Authority, that call up with very special needs of things that are not normally recyclable. Um, when we used to do our Lincoln leadership classes, I'd have them, the, the class would come through the courtyard and I'll ask them, what is recyclable? Will you get the normal kind of answers? Aluminum, glass, steel, plast- you know, uh, type one, type two, plastics. Well, the reality is, what's recyclable is something that somebody else wants to use again. And we get things that fall out of, that aren't within those normal range of, of items that we all think of as being the typical recyclable items that go into the, the, I'm doing air quotes, you can't see it, the uh, blue bin. And I'll give one example, last time I was out at the MRF and I was, I was in, uh, checking out the operation, how was going on? And they had a couple of ninety-gallon toters sitting out there, and they were all full of occult probiotic drink bottles. You know, those little like one and a half, two ounce little bottles of, of uh, of the probiotic drinks for, for uh, for uh, good digestive health. It was just full of those. Obviously, somebody called up and said, I want those bottles. They were able to separate out. We could separate, we get, get vendors that want old carpet. Vendors that want the old, um, I've seen, we've, we've had vendors that want the, the hard plastics, the kind of plastics that like, say, big wheels are made out of. Those kind of toys that are typically not recyclable. We can get greater diversion doing this method. The other thing we're able to do is we're able to keep the, the collection rates and the waste, the waste collection rates lower than where it is in most of the state. If you go to most of the state, what they pay in one, for one week is what we pay in a month. Why is that? Well, we're not paying for a whole extra fleet of trucks. We're, so we're able to get a higher rate of diversion and keep the cost down for the, for the ratepayers as well. Without, and if you have any other questions, mayor or council.
Do any of my colleagues have questions?
Nope, no questions, but, but an add-on, uh, at least when I left the board, uh, what, a couple of years ago now, Dan, the uh, the diversion rate, the recovery rate at what we call the dirty MRF was about seventy percent, way beyond what you'd get using a bin system.
That's, yeah, the difference is where the recyclables are sorted. They're either sorted in the house, uh, which is people separating at the house level, putting their cans in a bag and taking the cans down. Or putting everything in the one big bin. Uh, and because we have the type of system we have, the one big bin, everything is sorted by us and machinery at the MRF, the, it's called a dirty MRF. We are able to respond and get better diversion rates and potentially more revenue to support the uh, uh, the, the whole waste management thing by being able to react to the market. You can't, you get a an email from the city every three weeks saying, oh, this week, be sure and save your whatever and put it in this bag. Uh, and that's not going to work. It doesn't work in, in the community, but it does work there because we're, it's a closed system. We uh, tell the people that are pulling on the line, well, pull this out, separate it. So we s- sort at the end place rather than at the source, sorting. Uh, we're looking at a new system. Uh, Paul's right, the diversion rate was, I think, seventy, about seventy-eight percent. When I came on, we're looking at having a ninety, over ninety-five percent diversion rate because we're upgrading the system. And that's what we're aiming for. So that says ninety-five percent of the garbage that we get does not end up in the landfill. That's pretty significant.
Incredible.
And this twelve thousand dollars is supported by, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the five cents a can that everybody pays. Uh, and that's where that money comes from, through the state and back to us, to advertise.
Do I have a motion?
Madam mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty dash two-four-one.
Hold on a second. I'm sorry.
I know, you're gonna.
Thank you. Council member Joyner.
Yes.
Council member Carl Skin.
Yes.
Council member Andriata.
Yes.
Council member Lauritsen.
Yes.
And mayor Silhaj.
Yes. Alright, that closes that out. Moving on to intend public hearings. So ten A, wave full reading and introduced by title only ordinance ten twenty-seven B of the city of Lincoln, admitting section ten six point zero one zero to the Lincoln Municipal Code, establishing speed limits throughout the city. And our public works director, Ray, Ray Leffler, will be giving the staff report.
Alright, thank you, Mayor Silhaj, city council. Um, we bring for, bring towards you tonight. One second, so I just had something close up on me, and there we go. Um, a first reading of amendment to the citywide speed limit order, ordinance. The California Vehicle Code establishes prima facie speed limits for residential districts, business districts, school zones, and senior center districts. Um, real quickly, I'd just like to define residential districts has a very specific definition, and that is where you have thirteen dwelling units fronting upon one side of a roadway within a quarter mile distance, or sixteen dwelling units fronting along both sides for a quarter, that same quarter mile. Um, or this is important, oftentimes there's collector roadways that go through where everybody thinks of this being, you know, residential neighborhoods, and they are. But on the California Vehicle Code, there are no houses actually fronting on those roads, so those fall out of the prima facia uh, requirements for establishment of a twenty-five mile an hour speed zone. The California Vehicle Code also provides for procedures to identify speed limits other than prima facia by traffic studies that are required to be updated every seven years. Speed limits are set based on the speed that the eight, eighty-fifth percentile are driving and then rounded down. So really what it is, in, in, in short is, the speed limits are established really based upon how people are actually driving. Additional engineering judgment may be utilized to align the ten mile an hour pace and what that is, the ten mile. and what that is, the 10 mile an hour pace, that's the 10 mile an hour range of speeds that includes the largest number of vehicles, you know, within the steady period. Typically, that would include, that would include that 85th percentile. However, sometimes when it does not, then you can make the adjustments. The speed survey was, was performed in August of 2020 on 20 roadway segments within the city of Lincoln. Engineering judgment was utilized to justify an additional five mile an hour reduction using the 10 mile an hour pace criteria on 14 of those roadway segments. So again, it was typically rounding down and then another, uh, five mile an hour reduction so that we had a posted speed limit that aligned with the 10 mile an hour pace. We had two roadway segments that actually are going to have an increase in speed, and that is after, because we were only able to apply that 10 mile an hour pace criteria. But we were able to, we did, both of those did round down, um, three and four miles an hour respectively. Um, those being Joyner Parkway between Nicholas Road and Moore Road and Spring Valley, Valley Parkway. Those would be the only two that would, um, that would have an increase in, in proposed speed limits. Um, Joyner Parkway going from 40 to 45 miles an hour. And we had Spring Valley Parkway going from 35 to 40 miles an hour. So with that, um, staff recommendation would be in conclusion, City Council to open a public hearing and that the City Council waive the full reading and introduce by title only the first reading of the ordinance of the City of Lincoln amending section 10.56.010 to the Lincoln Municipal Code establishing speed limits throughout the city.
Thank you. Um, before opening the public hearing, I'll turn first to my colleagues and ask them individually, since we're in a virtual setting, if they have any questions first. Uh, Councilmember Andriata?
No, I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Joyner?
No questions. Uh, I'll probably just restate that I have never been a fan of this method of calculating speed limits and increasing speed limits based on ever increasing speeds, uh, in our community. But, uh, I think that this time around with backing off five miles per hour, I think we've done a pretty good job.
Councilmember Carl Skent?
No question.
And Councilmember Laur, let, let, make sure I'm saying your last name correctly so I don't butcher it all night long. Could you say it for me one time?
It's Lauritsen.
All right, so Councilmember Lauritsen, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
All right. With that, I will now open the public hearing and open it to the public if anyone would like to make a comment.
Mayor, I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, and then do I, I close the public hearing before I turn it back to us, correct? All right, so I'll close the public hearing, seeing no comments, and turn it back to my colleagues for any additional comments or questions.
You know, you know what, I, I'd like to just, Paul raised a good, a good point. Um, I'm not a big fan of this process either, but I mean, I was happy to hear that, you know, we're lowering more than we're raising. Is there, is there another method, uh, to, to gauge the, the traffic patterns or the speed patterns? Or is this the, is this the way everybody does it?
This is the established criteria as defined within the California Vehicle Code. And part of the other reason for it is so that we don't have, if we had a, a speed limit posted that was significantly different than how people are actually driving, or, you know, if we, you know, I'd always just say we went out on Joyner Parkway and posted 25 miles an hour. What we end up then having is people driving at very different speeds. We're going to have people that are going to be, you know, that's what the sign says, 25 miles an hour, they're going 25 miles an hour. And then you got the people that are going 45 miles an hour, and that into itself creates other significant safety constraints. But ultimately, um, right now, we're doing this in strict, uh, compliance with the California Vehicle Code.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'm wishing to waive the full reading and introduce by title only ordinance 1027B of the City of Lincoln amending section 10.56.010 to the Lincoln Municipal Code establishing speed limits through, throughout the city.
Ms. Gillen, can you take the roll call vote?
Yes, Councilmember Joyner?
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent?
Yeah.
Councilmember Andriata?
Yes.
Councilmember Lauritsen?
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj?
Yes. All right, moving on to 10B, uh, the two-part. One, conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation of the multipurpose easement in the northeast corner of the 12 Bridges Village 25 project. Two, adopt Resolution 2020-242 approving, A, the vacation of the multipurpose easement in the northeast corner of the 12 Bridges Village 25 project as noted on the 12 Bridges Village 25 final map. B, the improvement plans for 12 Bridges Village 25. C, the 12 Bridges Village 25 final subdivision map and authorizing the city manager to execute the subdivision improvement agreement. And D, authorizing the city clerk to sign the clerk's statement and record the final map and subdivision improvement agreement. Do I need to read the part in italics?
No, that's just fiscal impact for information only.
All right, our senior civil engineer, Lindy Childers, will be giving the staff report.
Hi, I'm Lindy Childers with the Development Engineering Division of Community Development. And this item is, um, you've explained what we're looking for. It's about 12 Bridges Village 25. And, uh, the, the project is located on Bellabees, north, on the north leg of the Bellabees Drive, west of East Joyner Parkway. And it's, to the east of the project is the 12 Bridges Village 1 development, which is also residential. And the tentative map of this project was approved in 2019. And we are now proceeding with the final map and the improvement plans. In order to approve the final map, the developer has requested that the city consider the abandonment of the multipurpose easement on the 12 Bridges Village 25 site. That multipurpose easement was established, um, to provide maintenance vehicles, a turnaround area, um, because the stub street of the 12 Bridges Village 1 project just terminated. And so garbage trucks would need to turn around. And so there was a multipurpose easement and a temporary cul-de-sac that was constructed. And that is no longer needed because the 12 Bridges Village 25 project is extending the street. And that, those improvements have already been removed. And, uh, there is no reason to maintain that easement any longer because the street is being extended. The, uh, the project developer is requesting that that abandonment of that easement take place here. They're also requesting that the, that afterwards, that the final map be approved uh, for the 12 Bridges Village 25 site and that the improvement plans be approved also. So there was noticing that was required for the abandonment of that multipurpose easement, and that was, um, put in the Lincoln News Messenger. And it was posted on-site for two and a half weeks, I believe. And so they met, so that was in compliance with state regulations for the noticing requirements for that abandonment. So now the first step in order to consider the abandonment is to open the public hearing to receive public comments regarding the proposed abandonment of that multipurpose easement in the northeast corner of, uh, the Village 25 site. And then close the public hearing and consider, uh, your opinions as well as after that, um, consider the adoption of the resolution for the vacation of the multipurpose easement and for the approval of the final map, the improvement plans, and the subdivision improvement agreement. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Um, so prior to opening the public hearing, do any of my colleagues have any questions? I'll ask you individually, given the virtual setting. Councilmember Andriata?
I, I don't at this point, thank you.
Councilmember Joyner?
No questions, very straightforward.
Councilmember Carl Skent?
No questions, typical.
And Councilmember Lauritsen?
I have no questions either.
All right, I will now open the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a comment?
Mayor, I do not see any hands raised at this time.
All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to my colleagues in case anyone has any additional questions or comments. Seeing none, does, do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion if nobody else wishes to. Uh, motion to adopt Resolution 2020-242 approving, A, the vacation of the multipurpose easement in the northeast corner of the 12 Bridges Village 25 project as noted on the 12 Bridges 25 final map. B, the improvement plans, uh, for the 12 Bridges Village 25. C, the 12 Bridges Village 25 final subdivision map and authorizing the city manager to execute the subdivision improvement agreement. And D, authorizing the city clerk to sign the clerk's statement and record the final map and subdivision improvement agreement.
Sergeant.
Ms. Gillen, can you take the roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Joyner?
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent?
Yes.
Councilmember Andriata?
Yes.
Councilmember Lauritsen?
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj?
Yes. All right, moving on, 10C. One, conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation of a portion of street right-of-way located in the southeast corner of Meadowlands Lot 4 project. Two, adopt Resolution 2020-243 for Meadowlands Lot 4 and 5 approving, A, the summary vacation of irrevocable offer of dedications of Lot 5, public utility easement on Lot Q and a portion of Lot Q within Meadowlands Lot 4. B, the vacation of a portion of street right-of-way located in the southeast corner of the Meadowlands Lot 4 project. C, the improvement plans for Meadowlands Large Lot 4. D, Meadowlands Lots 4 and 5 final subdivision map and authorizing the city manager to execute the subdivision improvement agreement. And E, authorizing the city clerk to sign the clerk's statement and record the final map and subdivision improvement agreement. Three, adopt Resolution 2020-244, resolution for Meadowlands Lot 1 approving, A, the summary vacation of irrevocable offer of dedications of Lot 9 for park purposes, Park Driveway and Ashwood Way and all public utility easements within Meadowlands Lot 1. B, the improvement plans for Meadowlands Large Lot 1. C, approving Meadowlands Lot 1 final subdivision map and authorizing the city manager to execute the subdivision improvement agreement. And D, authorizing the city clerk's statement and record, and record the final map and subdivision improvement agreement. Our senior civil engineer, Lindy Childers, Childers will be giving a staff report.
Thank you. I'm Lindy Childers, the Community Development, Development Division Engineering Manager. So this item is, uh, regarding the Meadowlands project, which is located on the northwest corner of Ninth Street and East Avenue. It's south of the elementary school, um, Carlin-Copland Elementary School. And the project Lot 1, which is, um, the 16 single-family residential parcels that are being proposed with that Lot 1 final map are north of the elementary school. So the tentative map on this project was approved in 2016 and had two successive extensions, which keep that tentative map active at this time. The property owner is, um, has requested that the final map for the Lot 1 be approved and the Lot 4 and 5 final map be approved for Meadowlands, as well as the subdivision improvements, agreements for both of those. And the improvement plans for the Lot 1 and the Lot 4 are approved and under construction. So Meadowlands Lot 1, the, well, the Meadowlands Large Lot, uh, final map had irrevocable offers of dedication on it, on both Lot 4 and Lot 1. And the Lot 1 irrevocable offers of dedication included Lot 9 for park purposes, Park Driveway and Ashwood Way, and the adjacent public utility easements. Due to the detailed design that occurred after the large lot final map was approved, there were minor adjustments that were necessary in those dedications. And because the large lot map took those irrevocable offer of dedications, the city council merely consented to the offers of dedication. Those dedications were not accepted by council. As a result, those minor adjustments are handled by a proposed abandonment. At this time, it's a summary abandonment and it does not require a public hearing. The next, the Lot 4, uh, Lot 4 within the large lot final map also had dedications that were irrevocable offers of dedication for Lot 5 and portions of Lot Q and the public utility easement associated with that Lot Q portion and within Lot 4. And again, those were irrevocable offers of dedication on that large lot final map, which were merely consented to by the city council action at that time. They were not accepted. And as a result of that, they are a summary vacation proposed here and do not require a public hearing. Now, the, in contrast to that, Lot 4 of the Meadowlands project has an existing right-of-way in the southeast corner of it, adjacent north of Ninth Street and west of East Avenue. And that was an actual right-of-way that had been accepted. Um, as a result of that, it, and it's an area that was never used by right-of-way. It was undeveloped and there were no utilities that were found to be in it. As a result, the city, um, working with the developers, team of engineers, coordinated with four different utility companies, PG&E, AT&amp;T, and, uh, Consolidated Communication and Wade Bromban, met with utility companies out there to make sure that there were no proposed utilities within that area. And, and all four of the utility companies, um, provided written approval of the abandonment of that right-of-way. And that particular portion of the right-of-way abandonment that's proposed here does require a public hearing with this action. So, uh, the noticing was provided in the Lincoln News Messenger as required by the State Streets and Highways Code. And it was also posted on-site for that vacation, that proposed vacation. So staff has reviewed the proposed vacations, all of them, the irrevocable offers of dedication on Lot 1 as well as Lot 4, and is in agreement that those, uh, should, we're recommending that those be abandoned with those final maps as well as recommending the public hearing for the abandonment of the right-of-way at the southeast corner of Lot, of the Meadowlands Lot 4. And staff is also recommending the approval after that public hearing of the final map of Lots 4 and 5 and the Lot 1 final map would be approved as well as the associated subdivision improvement agreements. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Um, because of the virtual setting, I'll ask my colleagues individually if they have any questions before opening the public, uh, the public hearing. Councilmember Andriata?
Um, actually, no, I, I had some questions, but I got them answered ahead of time. So I'm pretty, pretty comfortable with that.
Thank you. Councilmember Joyner?
I have one, but I think I'll hold off until after the public hearing.
Noted. Councilmember Carl Skent?
I have none now, but may have one later.
And Councilmember Lauritsen?
I have none right now.
All right, with that, I will open the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a comment?
Mayor, I do not have any hands raised. Oh, excuse me, I do have one hand raised. Mr. Carver, please go ahead.
Yeah. Hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, City Council, thank you, thank you for, uh, for having me on, Randy Carver. So I was just wondering, was it PG&E's property that, that was basically you're trying to get approval on, or whose property was it, uh, initially? Or, or is that, is this over, we don't know whose property it is? So basically, we're going to use it for that construction? I, I just wanted clarity in, in that whole matter.
Mr. Carver?
Go ahead.
With the public hearing, um, this is where you are able to make comments and kind of like provide testimony, and it's not a Q and A session.
Oh, that's, sorry, sorry about that. That's actually what I heard. I heard it was, uh, if the community has any questions, so I was actually asking a question, but apparently, I, I was wrong. It was in a, it was in a question form, sorry about that.
No problem.
I'll go ahead and yield. I appreciate your time.
Any further questions, Ms. Gillen?
No, Mayor.
With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to my colleagues for any additional comments or questions. Does anyone have one?
I do, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
And this is really, I'm, I'm okay with taking this action tonight, but this question is really, because I've never seen this before, so it's more curiosity and informational for me, and it's probably best directed to the city attorney. So Christine, interesting language, an irrevocable offer of dedication has been made that the council consented to, but did not accept. And my understanding is that a recordation actually happened with the county along the way as well. So how does that, how does that work? And it isn't consenting to a formal action, if you will? I mean, it's, I'm a bit confused by the languaging, I suppose.
Yes, what we are trying to do is use standard industry language, but, and I'll have to defer to Lindy, because I'm not, I'm not familiar necessarily enough with the actual transactional history. She's far more the expert than I am as to whether something was actually recorded with the county clerk. This is just simply trying, I think, to clarify the ownership records with the county clerk's office. And so that's why the language was chosen, because it's standard industry language, and we're, we're just trying to make a clarification to the record and make sure that there's no confusion, confusion moving forward.
Well, not your language, you did that for us.
I had the same.
Councilmember Joyner, I could add to that a little bit as the, the irrevocable offers of dedication that were consented to, in order to actually take the right-of-way as the agency to accept it, you, there is language in the clerk's statement that would be accepting those easements. And the reason that they were proposed as being consented to, we consented to the recording of that and they would have been accepted at a later date, because the detailed design could result in realignment or slight alignment changes, and, which they did. And that allows for the abandonment, because it was not an accepted dedication. It was consented to only. It allows the abandonment to be a summary vacation, which doesn't require a public hearing. That's a long answer to basically, it's a two-step process to accept the IODs. One is the dedication and then the acceptance. But you can consent to the recording of the dedication and with the intent to accept it at a later date, and that is what occurred on that Large Lot map.
Okay. So I think what I'm hearing is that there was never a formal take involved in this?
That is correct.
All right.
It's a two-step process and we never did the second step.
Got it.
That's a very helpful answer.
I've just never seen it before. In 12 years, I've never seen that, so my curiosity got the better of me.
Does anyone else have a question or a comment? Last chance. All right, hearing none, do I have a motion?
Anyone? I've got the right glasses on for it.
Nobody wants to read all that? I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-243 for Meadowlands Lot 4 and 5 approving. So do I need to go read through all that again? Would you like that?
Christine, for, for public hearings, do we read all of them like verbatim? We have in the past. Do we need to?
We have in the pa, we have in the past, but given that you read them as the introduction to the hearing, I think I'm fine with just a reading of the resolution number. Okay, that's why I was asking, because she already read all of it.
All of it, yeah.
And are we doing them two separate? Two fourths? Okay. Yes, please, just for clarity sake, particularly given we're in a virtual setting. Okay. So if I make the motion for, to adopt Resolution 2020-243 for Meadowlands Lot 4 and 5.
Sergeant.
Ms. Gilling, can you take the roll?
Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skin. Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Lauritson.
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj.
Yes.
And then I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-244. Resolution for Meadowlands Lot 1 approving the following A, B, and C.
And D.
And, and D, yes, thank you.
Sergeant.
Ms. Gilling, can you take the roll?
Yes, maybe. Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Lauritson.
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj.
Yes. All right, moving along. We have item 10D. Conduct a public hearing to consider a general plan amendment, a zoning amendment, and amendment to the Joyner Ranch General Development Plan and a small lot tentative subdivision map approval created in 199 medium-density residential lots. Two
Oh, I'm sorry. Go.
I was going to just read it all just to save us time then.
Go ahead.
You adopt Resolution 2020-245, adopting the mitigated negative declaration for the Joyner Ranch East project, subject to proposed mitigation measures, thereby determining there is no substantial evidence that the Joyner Ranch East may have a significant effect on the environment and that pursuant to seek with guideline sections 15070. Three, adopt Resolution 2020-246, approving an amendment to the general plan land use diagram for the 20 acres of general commercial and 5.6 acres of medium-density residential to 23.17 acres of medium-density residential and 2.49 acres of open space. And, and four, introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance 1028B, approving the amendment to the zoning diagram from 20 acres of general commercial and 5.6 acres of RD-8 to 23.17 acres of planned development, medium-density residential, and 2.49 acres of open space. Five, introducing and waive the first reading of ordinance 1029B, approving an amendment to the Joyner Ranch General Development Plan. And six, adopt Resolution 2020-247, approving the Joyner Ranch East tentative subdivision map. Now, Councilmember Joyner.
Madam Mayor, this, this property, this project involves my family, so I'm going to recuse myself at this point. And I'm actually going to leave the meeting, sign off of the meeting altogether and leave the room. So we could have somebody text me when you're done, so I can sign back in. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Paul.
All right, our planning manager Jim Bermudez will be giving a staff report for this item.
Actually, good evening, Mayor Silhaj. What I'd like to do, from time to time, the city planning department relies on contract planners that given resources and need for expediting various projects. So in this particular case, with this project, the city brought in one of our on-call contractors, Mr. Paul Yunker. He's with a planning firm that, Interwest, that the city has used from time to time, and he'll be delivering the staff report. And both Steve and myself are here for any planning questions or comments that may come up during deliberation. So at this juncture, I will turn it over to Paul and he'll probably load up his presentation.
Thank you, Jim. Mayor Silhaj, members of the council, pleasure to be with you this evening. Okay, I believe that this will bring up the presentation for you.
Yes, we see it.
Excellent. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening to present the Joyner Ranch East project. Project has been under review for some time at the city and is now coming to completion with a review of the city council this evening. Briefly, we're going to go through the project, identify some of the high points, share with you what we heard at the planning commission hearing, listen to and respond to any city council questions, and then we would turn it over to the city council for its consideration of the requested entitlements. First of all, getting oriented with where the project is at. It's generally west of, of the core of the town, the city of Lincoln. It's on a Joyner Parkway and Nicholas Road. Pulling in a little bit closer, we can see the site. Undeveloped, fallow, generally maintained, directly adjacent to Joyner Park. There is a drainage ditch on the southern portion of the project. Joyner Parkway is one frontage and then Nicholas Road is the northern boundary of the project site. What we're looking at is a residential subdivision. 199 residential lots would be created. And there's various landscape lots and open spaces as well that would support the project. These lots are somewhat smaller than typical single-family homes or single-family lots in the city of Lincoln, 42 to 45 feet wide, 70 to 80 feet deep. But these would be single-family residential lots. The applicants are requesting a general plan amendment, an amendment to the zoning map for the project, general development plan amendment, that's the Joyner Ranch Project's original general development plan, and then approval of the tentative subdivision map. So quickly running through the, the entitlements that are requested. The exhibits here show you the existing general plan and zoning on the left. So the majority of the project is zoned for general, is general plan designated for general commercial. And the general plan is medium-density residential. The zoning is also general commercial for the bulk of the property and a proportion that is RDA. So that's the current designations. The applicants have requested that the general plan be changed to medium-density residential. And the zoning would become planned development, medium-density residential for the bulk of the project. That's a portion that would be developed. And then the drainage area at the south of the property would be open space. So this is a diagram that shows you both the proposed general plan and the proposed zoning. The biggest change here is a conversion from a predominantly commercial site to an exclusively residential site. About 20 acres were designated for commercial with the Joyner Ranch project. That was some 35 years ago, 1985. And since that time, there has been some changes in the fabric of the city of Lincoln. There's changes with development that's occurred further to the south of town and north of this project. So really, there's, there's an overall shift in the form of Lincoln. Changes to Highway 65 and access to a Joyner Parkway was originally going to have a connection to 65 and that did not ultimately come to pass. And then really, a new commercial development that's been constructed throughout the city that's placed in ways that makes it more competitive. As a result, this commercial property has remained vacant for more than 30 years, 35 years. And the applicants have requested that they be allowed to pursue some type of development that would be feasible in, in today's market, as well as any foreseeable market. The general development plan prepared for Joyner Ranch covers the entire property. However, it does not have a designation for medium-density residential. So there's, in essence, no development standards for the type of development the applicants are requesting. There was a relatively brief section added that establishes development standards for medium-density residential. That's the biggest change proposed to the Joyner Ranch General Development Plan. There was a number of acreage callouts that had to be updated. But for the most part, the Joyner Ranch General Development Plan will remain as it was originally adopted. There will be a mapping change that identifies the subject property for residential and this additional section that describes the development standards for medium-density residential. The greatest amount of detail is presented in the subdivision map itself. This is where you see how the project lays out its individual components. And a few points that we'd like to bring to the council's attention. Circulation, the, the project will be accessed from both Nicholas Road and Joyner Parkway. We looked at Nicholas and spent quite a bit of time with how that road should be configured. It had at one time been imagined to be a four-lane road. However, east of the project, east of O Street, Nicholas Road is a two-lane road. After some consideration, as well as analysis of track, traffic patterns, it was determined that continuing the two-lane road along the frontage of this property made sense. And once we reached that conclusion, we looked closely at where the, the road should merge down to two, two lanes, one lane in each direction. Approaching from the west, the road is, Nicholas is a four-lane road. Excuse me. And, and we determined that it would be best if that merge occurs west of Joyner Parkway so we can get down to two lanes through the intersection and continuing on. This had a number of benefits, including being able to install pedestrian improvements at the southwest corner of Joyner and Nicholas, which would not be feasible with the current lane configuration. So that was, that was an additional benefit beyond the fact that we would get traffic necked down to two lanes through the intersection that would then continue on. Joyner Parkway was really constructed to its outer extent previously. There is a, a turnout or an entry point to the project that will be retained along Joyner Parkway. It'll be widened a bit. We, by today's standards, it isn't as wide as we would like to see, but the location will remain unchanged. There's a left-turn pocket for Joyner Parkway's southbound traffic. It's blocked off at this time because there's no entry, but that left-turn pocket would be activated so that traffic traveling northbound on Joyner would have a right-in, right-out. So exiting traffic would not cross Joyner Parkway. And then traffic heading southbound on Joyner would have a left-in entry to the project. This configuration was actually designed for commercial uses, which have a higher traffic demand. And so it, it is, we're confident that this will serve the needs of the residential project as proposed. The open space parcel at the south edge of the property currently has a bike trail easement, bike pedestrian trail easement that was established early in the planning process. That easement would be retained but moved next to the rear yards of the proposed houses. This would remove the bike trail from proximity to the drainage ditch and would avoid any potential impacts with, with land that is close to the 100-year floodplain. The bike trail, pedestrian trail is maintained. The developer will construct it. There will also be access to this trail from the project through an open space lot. And then this entire property would be designated open space. And the trail connection would lead from Joyner Park to Joyner Parkway. Project has quite a bit of interface with Joyner Park. About half of it was retained as what we refer to as single-loaded streets, so that there's good visibility into the project. All of this street is single-loaded, meaning no houses on, on the other side. So good visibility into Joyner Parkway, which is really beneficial for security, eyes on the park, as well as just really creates a nice interface with the park. Looking a little bit closer, you see this inset. The, the project has land which will not be developed for residential lot and will be dedicated to the city. So this will, in essence, increase the size of Joyner Park by a little more than a tenth of an acre. There is a small area of the road right-of-way as proposed that's outside of the applicant's current ownership. The proposal is that the city would release this land to the applicant. And through the development process, the applicants would then rededicate this as right-of-way. And the applicants would also dedicate this .11 acres to the city for a, a small expansion of the park and would improve it with landscape improvements. So a very small transfer of land between the city to allow us to get the knuckle of this road to city standard and allow good circulation. And also, this parcel will help to open up the views into Joyner Park. The planning commission heard this project on November 18th. They, they did recommend the city council approve the project and adopt the Joyner Ranch East initial study mitigated negative declaration. Within the public comments, there were, were two comments that were voiced by a couple of speakers. One was regarding the proposed bike path. And really, the, the question was whether a, a bike path into a neighborhood park without a continuing bike route makes sense. a continuing bike route makes sense. The really, the intent of this connection is to allow movement from Joiner Parkway to Joiner Park. We think that it's probably going to be utilized primarily as a local connection for individuals wanting to get to the park without utilizing streets. We don't anticipate that there's going to be a lot of traffic because there is no through path at this time. So it'll probably be primarily families seeking to stay off of roads or individuals just wanting to get to the park. Second concern was the existing drainage ditch is approaching full capacity at this time during storm events. As part of this project, the drainage ditch will be restored to its original inverts, which will allow water to flow more freely and will not only allow the conveyance of any runoff from this project, but will improve the conveyance of runoff already moving through this ditch, which right now is constrained because of siltation. Planning Commission's comments regarding the project were really mostly focused on circulation. A big one was how do residents leaving this project get onto Joiner Parkway South? Now, remember, they can't just pull out onto Joiner and turn left. So the two ways that individuals could get to southbound Joiner would be exiting on Joiner and then doing a U-turn at the Joiner-Nicholas intersection, which is an allowed movement. Or they could enter, exit the project to Nicholas, turn left, and then proceed to the intersection and and have a left turn at Nicholas onto southbound Joiner. So it was very important to the commission that those movements be considered and be provided for. We did have a fair amount of discussion about the Nicholas Road configurations, why we were proposing to reduce to two lanes west of Joiner Parkway, and good discussion. And then ultimately, the that there were commissioner members that were concerned about the amount of time that they had had to review the Initial Study Mitigated Negative Declaration. It was a significant document, and because of that, they had some reservations about moving forward with the decision at the November eighteenth meeting. Environmental review was accomplished through preparing the Joiner Ranch Initial Study Mitigated Negative Declaration. That study found that there were four potential impacts that needed to be considered and mitigated. Impacts to biological resources, noise impacts generated by the project, cultural resources, and tribal cultural resources, which really are are very closely related but focus on Native American tribes. The project, because it was a a SEQA document was prepared and because a general plan amendment is proposed, required consultation with Native American tribes. Two two separate laws, AB fifty-two and SB eighteen require that consultation. It was conducted. We worked with the United Auburn Indian Communities. Mitigation measures were requested, and they were incorporated into the project SEQA document. That is staff's report on the project. The the requested actions are before you, a resolution to adopt the Joiner Ranch Initial Study Mitigated Neg-Deck, a resolution to amend the general planned land use map, an ordinance to amend the zoning diagram. And and again, keep in mind, the general plan amendment and the zoning amendment are limited to changing the designations on the maps. There's no policy or text changes associated with these. Fourth action is to introduce way first reading of an ordinance to amend the Joiner Ranch General Development Plan. And then finally, a resolution that would approve the Joiner Ranch East tentative subdivision map. That concludes staff's comments. We are available to respond to questions. We do also have Patrick Heinmarsh, excuse me, with Michael Baker International. His firm prepared the SEQA document, and at this point, we would turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. And before opening a public hearing for to hear from the from comments from the public, I'm going to turn to my colleagues one by one. Councilmember Andriata, do you have any questions?
I do. I have a couple. Thank you. My first question is, looking at your map in the open space, can you can you tell me? Because I'm not sure I'm looking at it right. Can you tell me how much is that forty percent of the whole lot or the whole piece of property? Or is it? How much is that open space?
It's two and a half acres out of, I think the project is about twenty-four acres. It run it's roughly ten percent. This project was obligated to meet the park standard of five acres per thousand. There's there's two different standards. And since there's no development agreement associated with this, they are obligated to meet the five acres of parks per thousand.
Right. Yeah, that's correct. Okay, thank you. All right. The other question is, could you tell me if if you guys have done any outreach to the community around this piece of property in relation to this project?
The outreach consisted of noticing noticing the Planning Commission hearing and noticing the city council hearing. The SEQA document was posted on the city website as well. So those were those were the forms of outreach that occurred. There was not a community meeting beyond that, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you. I think that's it for the moment, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on, Councilwoman Carl Skin.
Yeah, I have really a couple of questions. Not going to affect my my vote, I don't think. But it's for if when I was doing research for information. When Joiner, when the Joiner Land or Joiner Ranch Development Agreement was, general development plan was built, what what general city general plan was in existence at that time? This was in nineteen eighties.
Councilmember, I'm going to defer to city staff to share that. I know it predates the current city of Lincoln general plan.
Yeah. My-
Senator Carl Skin, this is this is Steve Prosser, Community Development Director. It was the nineteen ninety-eight or nineteen eighty-eight general plan.
Nineteen eighty-eight? I wonder if we have a copy of that. It would be really interesting.
It it was identified in the nineteen eighty-eight as a as a future project because the general development plan was approved by council in nineteen eighty-five, but the discussion about development was in nineteen eighty-eight.
Which precedes even the discussions on development for the Twelve Bridges area and and subsequent development. I'm going back on thinking about the putting commercial property there. There was no commercial land really in the city at that time. If you back off the city from, if if the thought of Twelve Bridges and the thought of Lincoln Hills, the thought of Lincoln Crossing didn't exist in plan yet, then I can understand why they commercialized this because this would be a very significant corner of the town. So it was a nineteen eighty-eight general plan.
Yes. Well, actually, the general development plan was adopted prior to the nineteen eight general plan, but the future development of the site was envisioned post nineteen eighty-eight.
Okay. Then the other question I have is in the Initial Study Mitigated Declaration document. And there's something I saw in the tables which confused me. In particular, they they showed up in the the geologicals tables where you talk about soil. And it's on, if the consultants there, it's in chapter four, page twenty-three. There are items like seismic-related ground failure, including liquefaction. In the table, it shows that it's potentially significant impact. And then it goes up, and it so that box is checked. And the less significant impact box is checked. And that's not the only thing in there like that. What does that mean? Patrick, could you- The text, and I know, but it looked to me like it should be, it's mitigated by correct development, correct soil compaction. So I don't, I'm I'm wondering how those two boxes in that line got checked. I'm worried, I wonder about the same thing. The project be, if the project's on expansive soil, which it is, it says it's potentially significant impact, and then it just says less significant impact. Does that mean, is the check wrong? And it should be less significant with mitigation incorporated?
Hello, this, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I am.
Hi. This is Patrick Heinmarsh with Michael Baker. Yes, I'm looking at that at the checklist table right now, and there are errors in there. Those, the the two boxes that are checked as potentially significant impacts shouldn't be checked. You can rely on the text in there that that describes how the impact can be reduced to significant. But-
Oh, right.
A few of those boxes have more than one check. So that is an error.
I've never seen that before, and bother me. So I read the the-
I wish I had seen it before. They wouldn't be in there.
They, I I read the text, and I understood what the mitigation is. And so that is insignificant, but anyway, I point that out.
Typically.
I don't know whether that document, that table is significant enough and needs to be updated, or it's it's fine the way it is with annotations in the record for this discussion.
Dan, what page are you talking about on the report? Which one?
It's the the SEQA. It's-
Four-point-oh dash twenty-three.
Right. Four-point-oh dash twenty-three.
Gotcha. Thank you.
There we go. We can update that so that the correct version is on the city's website.
Okay.
And and Mayor Carl Skin, given that the oral portion or the written portion of the report is accurate, and it's simply the summary chart that has a typographical error, I think we can note for purposes of our public hearing that there was a typographical error and that it will be remedied in accordance with what Mr. Heinmarsh just indicated. And we should be okay to move forward, given that it was just simply a typographical error.
Thank you, Kristi. I'm I'm, I was happy with the text, so. Okay, I think that takes care of my questions, anyway.
All right. Councilmember Alorton?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I know you may not know the exact figure, but what would the price range be for these units?
Councilmember, we would defer to the applicants to respond to that when we bring them on during the public hearing.
Okay. All right. Second question was, how would how would these units fit in with our current housing inventory in Lincoln?
If your question is, I'm not sure, but I I wonder if your question's related to RENA or affordable housing obligations?
Affordable housing obligations.
These are not proposed to be affordable dwellings. They would not assist you with meeting your RENA obligations.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, if you, if it is okay, I'd like to answer the question regarding the housing prices. In the fiscal analysis, there was an assumed housing price included in the housing price, and it was in the mid to high three-hundred thousands. So which is a little bit lower than the market prices we are seeing established for some of the new homes that are being constructed in the Twelve Bridges area, as well as some of the planned projects that we have recently completed fiscal analysis for related to Village One as well as Meadowlands.
Thank you.
I think that probably the word attainable is a good word to use for this price home.
I agree. I would consider this price home to be more of the at the entry level or more of the service-type income levels of the worker classification that we have within the city of Lincoln as opposed to some of the other areas in town. So I do agree that although it would not be considered affordable housing, it will be a more affordable product within the city.
Any further questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I do have one along those same lines. So so it's my, actually, a couple. So it's my understanding, based on the conversation I had before and what I'm hearing right now, that there a builder has not been brought onboard yet. They're looking for the right builder. So my first question is, we're looking at this proposed map, what this project is supposed to look like. When a builder does come on to the project, if it's approved, are they agreeing ahead of time to go with the project the way it's laid out? Or are they going to come in and want to change it all and bring a new design back to council?
If that were to hap- that certainly could happen, but if that were to happen, it would require amendments to the items that were brought forth before you this evening. And so you, city council, if the design were significant, for example, lot sizes were significantly changed or the general layout of the map was significantly changed. But Steve, can you please provide a little bit more information regarding that question since you are the expert in the planning area?
Yeah, the they, the map that's being approved, it could be approved tonight or decided upon tonight, would be the tentative map that would be brought forward in the future if desired by the developer to create the final map. We would need to make per the Subdivision Map Act that any future project being brought forward to city council is is significantly complies with that originally approved tentative map. If it does not, then they would need to come forward for additional entitlements to amend that tentative map.
Okay. And so my second question goes along with the question about price point, because I had asked that question earlier. So we're we're assuming that based on the size of the lots and what this project is supposed to look like, we're looking at, you know, low three-hundreds or whatever. But there's no guarantee of of that, right? Like, they could come in and and change it. So I mean, that's kind of what we're guessing, right? But there's no real guarantee of that. Or-
What we can say is that that this project is a is a market rate project. There is no restrictions or anything that could preclude from selling at market rate. The study that was done in fiscal analysis is more than likely over a year old. So market rate may, as as the city manager has has pointed out, our housing pricing has increased over the past year. But there, but it would be what the market would dictate.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
So I I had a few follow-up questions. One, and follow-up to Ms. Andriata's question. When you say if they come back and it is substantially different, define substantial. Like, what would have, how how much room is there?
Well, the first one, easiest one, is the no additional lots. If there is an introduction of an additional residential lot, that would automatically require a return to city council or through the Planning Commission for an amendment. It would be a substantial change to the areas of street dimensions and layouts inconsistent with what's been approved, reduction or modification of the identified open space, the inclusion or increase in need for area for storm drainage. Those would be the some of the changes that could potentially trigger bringing back to council. Those would be the, some of the changes that could potentially trigger bringing back to council.
Okay, so substantial material, any real deviation from what is on here would bring up, automatically trigger it back?
Right. So, so Mayor Silhaj, this is Christine. I'm, I'm just, to clarify, the standard is that the final map must be substantially similar to the tentative map, not that there are substantial changes
Got it.
to the final map.
That's helpful. And then I also had a question regarding, again, when Councilmember Andriata asked if there had been any community outreach. And I just wanted to make sure that I heard correctly that there was nothing in addition to just the, you know, legally required notice. There wasn't any like effort to get buy-in from the residents who are in that adjacent community right across the, that canalway there, who are closest to the project. Was there any, any targeted outreach at all to, to try to get that community to feel okay about the proposed project?
This is Jim Bermudez. You're correct, there was no targeted outreach done for this project other than the standard noticing, as mentioned.
Not by the, not by the, not by staff, but not by anyone at all?
Yeah, not by anyone. Staff just sent the required noticing per state law.
And then my final question for, for now anyway, is on the SEQA declaration, I know that a lot of the significant impacts are no longer substantial because they can be mitigated. But is there any, like, what are we talking in terms of the actual impact to the, those residents who do live near the project? Is, is there a substantial change in their quality of life? Do you see what I'm saying? Like there's going to be extra noise, there's going to be extra traffic. There's all these different things that can be mitigated in terms of like SEQA qualifications. But what does it actually mean for the person who lives next to it, is what I want to know?
From a SEQA perspective or just in general quality of life?
Like it. So from a SEQA's perspective, I understand the legality of, you know, mitigate this, mitigate that, but that doesn't necessarily always translate to your real life, everyday impact for the person who's there. I want to know, what, what are we really talking about in terms of, I live across the street of this proposed development. I live, you know, adjacent to it. How does that impact me?
From a public safety perspective, you would, it would be likely to assume that the residents would feel a safer sense of community when compared to a commercial land use as currently identified in the general plan. And as you'll recall, this project has been planned for since, I think, Mr. Junker said the late eighties at this point. And so there's always anticipated to be development on this corner. So one of the challenges that we have faced with residents is twofold. One, there are residents that are tired of seeing, you know, the dirt lot staying empty and being disced on a regular basis and not being fully developed. It does, from a visual perspective, when you look at the lot in context of the park, it does look like an unfinished area. From the perspective of the zoning request changes before the City Council this evening, from a resident's point of view, there is definitely going to be less perceived or actual public safety concerns related with residential parcels versus commercial parcels. Now, if you'll call with commercial, especially general commercial per our zoning code within municipal code, that has a large bandwidth for the types of commercial that could actually go in those parcels. So certainly is the perspective of any specific individual. But from a quality of life perspective, I do not anticipate that the proposed change would reduce anybody's quality of life. I do think that what it does do is it provides a completion of a long unfinished project that's been hanging around for decades. And it really does dovetail nicely into our need to also focus on infill projects. Infill projects are those projects that are not considered to be expansion-type projects per the general plan and are really looking to utilize the space already located within the city. So from an urban planning perspective, and we always like to look at infill projects to ensure that we are, you know, building this city out in a manner that we're not inducing urban sprawl for no reason when there are infill opportunities, specifically for residential, given our current housing shortage. I certainly understand the concerns expressed by the residents. It's always very challenging for all residents, including myself, when you get used to how your neighborhood feels and looks and operates, and there is some change on the horizon. Without the zoning code change, there wouldn't have been, you know, and Steve would have to correct me if I'm wrong, there, there wouldn't be an opportunity for some of these considerations to be relooked at through the environmental perspective and from the standpoint that they're already planned for to a certain extent. So with this proposed zoning change, we are taking another look at it. I certainly do understand some of the thoughts put into possibly needing to have done better public outreach. I do have the sense, though, from the correspondence, from the community, that they are well aware of this particular project and that it is not blindsiding folks just from the standpoint that we have been receiving comments from the nearby neighborhood. With that said, I think that, you know, this is a thoughtfully planned project. And one of the things that I find advantageous or beneficial to the city as a whole for this project is that although Ms. Councilmember Andriata is definitely correct, one of the things to note is when we do fiscal analysis, we are doing an estimated assessed valuation of the parcel once improved and improvements are on it. This is based off of a market analysis at the time that the fiscal analysis was completed. And so the fiscal analysis that I referenced was completed in 2017. So the size of the lots within Lincoln and somewhat the, the actual neighborhoods do feed into or inform the market price as eventually established for the house. But what also influences it even more is the lot size. You're not going to see eight hundred thousand dollar homes on the, this smaller size of lot. Those types of homes do require for price point purpose or market analysis purpose to have larger lots. So it is likely that you, these homes, once the project is sold or finally developed for residential purposes, that the homes could be higher, but it would be higher relative to the current market. So in 2017, if the high end of the market was at six hundred thousand dollars and now it's at one, seven hundred thousand dollars, you would expect to see some of an increase. But with this being planned to be on the lower end of the price point for single-family residential as opposed to some type of alley-loaded or attached or zipper lot type product, we would still expect it to come in at the lower of the market. And this is a piece of the housing market that we're currently missing. And these are the homes that we really see, kind of those first-time home buyers or home buyers that are having some type of significant financial change in their life, trying to get back into the home buying market purchase. So I do think that although it's not affordable, I do think there is a great benefit to providing this type of market to our community.
Thank you. With that, I think we've all had opportunity to ask our initial comments, and I will open it up to the public and open the public hearing.
Yes, Mayor, we do have one hand raised. Chad Roberts, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Silhaj, council members. This is Chad Roberts on behalf of the applicant. Are you able to hear me?
I am, yes.
Great. I don't have anything to add to Paul's report at this time. We do want to thank staff for all their hard work in getting this project before you this evening. Certainly appreciate Jennifer's and Steve's and Paul's responses to your questions thus far. Think they did a great job with those. If, if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them. I want to also note the applicant's engineer, Greg Bardini, is also on the line this evening, and he's available to answer any technical questions you might have. Applicant's development consultant, Al Johnson, is also on the line. Otherwise, we want to thank you for your time and respectfully request you adopt the staff recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Ms. Kinlan?
Yes, Mr. Chapman, please go ahead. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you, Gwen. Mayor Silhaj and council members, again Byron Chapman in Twelve Bridges area. Couple of questions, if not comments. I've been at the Joiner Park during the summertime, and that park is busy all the time. And it's a wonderful park, the way it's set out, the lay of the land. Many activities can take place all at once, from literally soccer to baseball to you name it. They have it out there. It's a great park. Listening to and looking at, at the map, the portion that I guess it would be on the southeastern corner, closest to the park, where it makes a somewhat of a, a small turn at that location. And also, if I hear, if I heard right, would also be a, a good entrance point from that subdivision into the park. What I've also noticed over time, however, at, at Joiner Park during the summertime, is that cars are lined up everywhere. I mean, just literally everywhere. And I'm concerned that having that section there could indeed have the possibility of cars parking in that subdivision as they do all around the park as it is today. So, so that would be a major concern of mine for those who live there. And most likely are going to have a hard time even parking in front of their own home. My, my other issue, and maybe it has already been addressed. We do have the lumber company that is there on any given day, depending on which way the wind is blowing. Does indeed, let's just say, it's not the type of smell that you really want to warm up and get cozy and fuzzy with. And my last item is the fact that these homes are not in the, in the higher scale of affordability. Here in Lincoln, there, there, it's no surprise or certainly known that we indeed, as a city, are far behind when it comes to low-income and senior housing. I, I don't know at what point the, the city is going to look at these types of projects that do have a great deal of housing. And I'm concerned that if at all, this looks like one of those projects where we could make somewhat of an inroad, if indeed that that was a consideration for this particular location. Again, it's not very large lots. However, I would think that the city could take a look at this and see how that might work with the developer, the property owners, because i- if we don't start here, where do we start? We, we have a lot of building going on even right now on the west side of Joiner. Many, many homes are going in and other are projected to go in. But I don't hear and see a great deal of taking advantage at this point in time to address those. And if possible, figure out how that could be incorporated here in order to allow that type of housing to take place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Shiber, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. To kind of coat tail off of Mr. Chapman's comments, I was looking at the agenda item you have coming up next on the, on the housing. And if I understood the maps correctly, this is one, one area, this project. And you know, earmarked as possible low in or affordable income, you know, housing. And, you know, it seems like every time there's a, an opportunity, it gets passed over. That's one, one item. The second item is the general plan amendment. It's it's one of a long, long list of general plan amendments. And when Village Five went through, we were told it had to stick with the general plan. You had to stay with the general plan. So it's nice to see that you no longer have to stick with the general plan. You can just amend it all that you want. Another topic is this is changing from commercial to residential. And so the next time the city manager or council members complaining about not having the sales tax revenue from, that, that Roseville and Rockland have, you, you might want to consider why you don't have it. And, and this would be a good reason why you don't have it, because you do away with it. So that's my comments. Thank you.
We have another hand raised, Mayor. Mr. Garabedian, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Mike Garabedian. I live on Shellbach. I hope, I'm going to hit some high points. I hope I'll get some questions. The general plan should not be amended from commercial use. You can, you can do a number of things there, not, and not put a wall of houses around the park and affect it. You have not been shown the habitat, the wildlife habitat lost in the field. It's been discredited. And you're discounting the quality of life of every person that has grown up and used that park and uses it now. This could have a negative impact, absolutely, on Sierra Pacific Sawmill there, right on the other side of the road. It, the smell and lights, I'm, I'm a forester, so these don't bother me. I live on Shellbach. But the noise, the, the, the light, the smell will, will very likely cause this to be an undesirable place to live, live that could be definitely could deteriorate it and the whole area has to be looked at. Now, the staff says that these things are covered, it told me in the environmental report. Well, the, the SEQA only requires disclosure, it, it does, of the impacts. It's up to you to make up your minds what to do about this. You can go by and smell and listen and see the lights at night and what's just totally ignored about this. Now, we need to support Joiner Park and the community needs there. In recent weeks or so, a week or two, I've talked to people there, like a, a, a fellow who was swinging his very tiny girl on, on, who had, who says he, it was not developed before, when he was growing up there. Another young woman who grew up there watching the wildlife. She described long-legged birds in the field. And you have not even, not only been, not presented with the soil types there. The south, the southwest corner is hardpan, substratum, hard, expensive to build on. So the, these factors really need to be looked at. The, the south side, having the street, having the, the bike way on the south side and the, and the, the open space area opens up, there's plenty of room, there's bike lane on Joiner and Nicholas. You don't need to run street bikes through the park and, and, because it's a walking park. It's, it's a place where kids play and their parents go. So there's been, what, three weeks between the, the, the Planning Commission and this, including Thanksgiving? It's COVID time. There's absolutely not been enough opportunity for the community to get, to get involved and get in this issue. And I, I can assure you that, that what's happening here is out of sync with that neighborhood. It's just, you really have to consider and look at what, what's there and have to look at the, what's being affected. That whole east side of the north part, you know, that area, they're putting houses on lawn there. Now, maybe that is owned actually by the proposers of that development, but that's an example of both where they're putting houses over lawn right next to, moving it, putting that right up next to the, the pathways you can see there. And that is the area of one of the significant wet areas going north and south, right along there and along the path. You can, you can see where they tried to take their tractor in there and it sank into the soil while the rest of it was dry, sank deep in and they had to try to back out. So you, you, you haven't been told. It's really shocking. You haven't been told what's there and what's on that and what its value is for, for habitat and for, you know, an example of the park next door. Certainly, there are commercial uses that could be there, public uses that would be compatible with the wet areas and vernal pools and prairie, the grasslands that are there, grasslands that sequester carbon. And to do that consistently-
Garabedian, if you could please wrap it up.
Well, thank you. Glad to have a chance to reintroduce these issues, and I will continue to do it. If you approve it tonight, I will continue to do it as it moves on through your process and the process of the agencies that have to approve the destruction of the area. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another hand, Mr. Carver, please go ahead.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hello, this is Randy Carver. So I did have a few issues with environmental impact as well. I really wasn't, it's, it's a lengthy read along with all the rest of the things that the city has posted. And I would really- I would really, really need more time to actually look over it. And I guess it doesn't matter with me because I'm a citizen. So at the end of the day, I mean, we don't have the say to do or to do not, or to not do something. So at the end of the day, we need to look at the environmental impact. Is there vernal pools? Is there fairy shrimp? Have we gone through the whole process of finding out what do we have there? And also tax, I mean, we could tax for the gas that's coming in, selling, whatever the case may be. I mean, we're making more money off of a, off of a situation where it's it's a gas station instead of houses that are causing impact on sewage, on water, on so many other things. I mean, if everybody washes their car at once, the sewage is impacted immediately if we have an issue, which Ray Leftwich said that we do, but we're resolving, then what's going to happen? I mean, we say that, okay, well, maybe we can fix it, we're going to. Well, we need to actually see what's going to happen to it to where we could see in the long run, is this going to be sufficient or not? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further?
No further hands. We did have one additional comment letter, which was emailed to City Council. Will be made part of the record from Jason Gasser. The other email was from Mr. Garabedian, who also spoke. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, I will hereby close the public hearing and bring it back up to my colleagues for any further comments or questions. I think I will call it off. So starting with Councilmember Andriata.
Yeah, I think I have a couple of questions. My answers, my questions have been answered, but I have a couple of comments. With all due respect to to the applicant and, you know, that this is, you know, their property, they have a right to sell it and do what they want. And I realize it's been sitting empty for all these years. And I realize that the building of the bypass has made the prospect of commercial use of that property, you know, somewhat more challenging. But I have a couple of issues here. The first one is, I feel like if more outreach had been done to the community, I would feel a lot more comfortable about this. I realize that, you know, posting it and doing the legal, you know, requirements is, that's the legal requirements. But, you know, we have other developers in town who really go out of their way to do community outreach for the neighbors that are already there to make sure that they feel comfortable. And I know not everybody does that. And I honestly don't mean any disrespect to our applicants tonight. I just feel like I've seen and heard a lot of, you know, concern about this from the people that are already living there. So I feel like if, if there could be more outreach to the neighborhood, I might feel more comfortable about it. So that's my first thing. And the other issue is that, you know, I mentioned, well, I think I asked earlier and some of you had mentioned about affordable housing. We were about to look at our housing element. We keep talking about this. We have a whole task force working on it. And again, this is not the applicant's problem. It's not their obligation to build affordable housing. It's our obligation to make sure that we save some land to do that. And I feel like that we just keep kicking kicking it down the road. So I'm concerned about that. The other thing is, and again, this is not the applicant's problem, so I'm going to apologize to them upfront. But I, you know, we've been dealing constantly with the overload on staff and low staffing. And, you know, are people doing a ton of work and, you know, just too much? And I feel like adding more onto them right now is not something that I feel very comfortable with. So if they're asking for me to agree to change the zoning, and I don't even necessarily, I don't know if I necessarily have a real problem with changing the zoning. But I also feel like, you know, I've been told several times that, well, this project's been in the work for five years and it's been going on, which I understand that the plot's been there for a while. I got this report like four days ago, whenever it got mailed out on Thursday or Friday, which is, you know, normal. But it's a lot to take in. And I feel like, like I'm being rushed to make a decision on this. And so I totally get Ms. Hanson's point about, you know, we need this kind of, you know, more affordable, it's not affordable housing, but lower price point housing for the people in our town. But I just, I don't know, I just don't, I feel really uncomfortable about saying yes to this tonight for all the reasons I stated. And again, apologies to the applicant. Some of these things aren't their problem, but I do feel like if there had been more community outreach, I might feel more comfortable. So that's kind of where I stand right now.
Thank you. Moving to Councilmember Carlsson.
I don't I don't know about I understand that in particular thinking about one development done a couple of years ago, where there was significant outreach. This is, this is a different animal. This project is, the land is either commercial or it's residential. This and that's the basic choice. If you want to keep it commercial, it's going to stay vacant. If you want it something on the land, it's residential. Though where the other project where all of the actually individual to individual outreach was done was something that was stuck right in the middle of an existing development where there were other houses on all four sides. Three and a half sides. This is not that way. This is a piece of property that they're asking for the zoning change, and that's a decision we have to make. But, but once you do it, you're no longer making this. Then you're into the finiments of the design. And the, you know, the width of the bicycle path, the amount of the open space on on the east side, west side. I just getting sidetracked on outreach. The environmental stuff's been on the website for 60 or 90 days. I too just got this package on four days ago. However, I knew it was coming up, so I watched the planning commission meeting, which gave me some visibility. But anyway, I I have enough information to make my vote.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lortzen?
Yeah, right now, this state seems to be bleeding its middle class. And this would provide some decent housing. It's not affordable, but it's certainly attainable. This parcel apparently really doesn't have much use as a commercial lot and probably much more as a residential. It provides some excellent starter housing for families, being right next to a nice park. It seems to be well laid out. You know, I have no problem with changing the zoning from commercial to residential. I mean, I think this could be a good addition to our housing stock here in Lincoln.
And then I have some, I have some comments. First, I want to thank the applicant because I do think that this is a really well proposed, really well thought out and it, and it looks to be well planned and I think could have a good use. I don't have a problem necessarily with like a conceptual change from commercial to residential. Ideally, it'd be great for the community out here to have commercial. But it has been, you know, stated that as of right now, there doesn't seem to be appeal for that land and there hasn't been in the past. All of that said, however, I really, on a gut level, I really have a, I'm not comfortable with it. And I think a lot of that stems, all due respect to Councilmember Carlsson. It really does stem from the residents who have, they're not, they're not comfortable with it. And it's not that they were blindsided, it's that as proposed, it's not, they're not comfortable with it. And I, I do feel like if we're going to make changes that are substantially different from what someone who purchased their home thought it was going to be, that there is some sort of obligation of really trying to get at least some buy-in from the community nearby. You know, I do live in the Foscat area, so not, you know, next to this proposed project, but on that side of town. And my neighbors and, you know, the people that my kids go to school with, most of them like the empty lot, to be honest. Not that that would restrict, you know, development, but to Ms. Hanson's point, it's not just like a eyesore bare field. It's people want that to be something that would contribute to them. And I do think to Councilmember Lortzen's point, I am very concerned in terms of, you know, our affordable housing and attainable housing. That said, we have developments that are recently built that are around this price point. This might be a little lower, but we do now, I mean, when I first got on council, there was no attainable, you know, from a under $500,000 price point really that was available in the city and not already, you know, occupied. But we do have some of that. And I'm not necessarily in a rush to add more housing right now. This does pay into its own, you know, public safety. However, we haven't solved our issue yet. We, we have helped it towards our tax sharing agreement and we're working towards it. But we still have a ways to go. And I think all of it combined, I just feel a little, it just doesn't sit well with me. And I did let the applicant know that in advance, that I just wasn't sure how I was going to land on this. I can see the benefits of having it. And I also really understand the comments that have been made to me by the residents. And I've been, I've been contacted by several and they really don't want it. And so I think that's making me feel really hesitant in moving forward, just full disclosure.
Mayor, may I make a recommendation? Hearing the concerns that are being surfaced this evening. So far to date, we have received about three, possibly four letters in opposition to this project from residents. I would, I would recommend that we continue the item to a later date so that we do have a chance to work through these issues. One of the challenges that we are currently facing is that currently the general plan has a zone for commercial. What essentially that means is that from a planning perspective and from previous policy decisions made by previous city councils is that it was always intended to develop this project. And that is also consistent with previous general plans, you know, going back even to the eighties. It was always intended for development on this particular corner. So from that perspective, I do feel that it's warranted or it would be beneficial to work through these issues without just coming to a decision to not approve the zoning tonight and maybe consider it at a later date. So that we are essentially not saying that we are not going to never develop this project, which would be inconsistent with the general plan. There is some very significant concerns related to the viability of commercial at this particular parcel. These have been confirmed, not only through my conversations with the development community, but also just in general through economic development perspectives. We have looked at this parcel several times. And when it was originally zoned commercial and the city council is aware, it was zoned at a time that was prior to the bypass being constructed. And so at that time, Joiner Parkway, as well as Lincoln Boulevard, were the main thoroughfares to reach this end of town. And now with the bypass present, there just is not the traffic and access that will be to this particular commercially zoned parcel for to make viable. And in fact, we were having a fairly difficult time getting the Ferrari Pavilion project, which is located on Ferrari Ranch Road and Lincoln Boulevard to pencil, just related to the demographics as well as the traffic. And the demographics in that particular area are a little bit more advantageous for commercial as well as the traffic access is more advantageous in that commercial, in that particular area. And for those reasons, I'm not overly surprised that commercial is not beneficial or likely to succeed in this area, especially given the track record that's been commercial for well over 30 years now. So I would make the suggestion that we take the comments we've heard this evening and go back and work to address those at the staff level and work with the community to better understand their concerns. And then bring this back at a later date when we're able to answer some of these questions and concerns more thoroughly.
That would work for me. What do my colleagues feel?
That's fine with me.
Yeah, that's fine with me also.
Dan, you're muted.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine with me.
So from that perspective, if we are going to continue it, we need to continue it to a date certain. Otherwise, we will have to renotice it, which is additional expense, cost and time. So it just, I guess I'm looking to staff to see how long they think it's going to take to do that work and bring it back. And if we want to just give ourselves a little more time, work with the project applicant and renotice it. Or continue it to a date certain, sometime in maybe February.
For the city attorney, staff is more comfortable if we, we notice it. Depending on the level of community outreach, I would want to make sure that we have time to address any comments.
I concur with that recommendation.
All right. With that, I'm satisfied. We can just continue it and we'll renotice it when the time comes.
So do we need to do anything? Do we need to take a motion on that or anything? Or is there any formal process for that?
No, well, you can make a motion to continue it, to allow staff to bring it back.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move that we ask staff to bring this issue back in future date.
Can you take the roll, Ms. Kellman?
Yes. Councilmember Carlsson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Andriata?
Yes.
Councilmember Lortzen?
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj?
Yes. All right, moving on to
And Mayor, I just texted Councilmember Joiner, letting him know he could rejoin the meeting.
Let's, let's wait for him real quick to pop back on. Is he here? I don't see him.
He just confirmed my text, so he should be getting on any minute.
I see that he's rejoined.
Oh, is he on? I don't see him. He is on.
I see.
Okay, sorry, he weren't popping up on my screen. All right, so moving on, 11, general business, we'll move on to
Andriata's iPhone.
Sorry.
You're fine. We'll move on to 11A, Adopt Resolution 2020-248, approving amendment number one to the amended and restated joint powers agreement for Pioneer Community Energy, expanding Pioneer Community Energy membership to include the County of El Dorado and the City of Placerville as voting members. And our city manager, Jennifer Hanson, will be giving the staff report.
I am just going to thank you, Mayor Silhaj. I'm just going to very briefly introduce this item and then I will be turning it over to Sam from Pioneer Energy, who will be giving the actual presentation. As the mayor stated, the item before the city council this evening is to take consideration of a resolution that will approve amendment number one to the amended and restated joint powers agreement for Pioneer Community Energy. And essentially what this action, if approved tonight, will do is it will allow the County of El Dorado, as well as the City of Placerville, to join into the Pioneer. And essentially what this action, if approved tonight, will do is it will allow the County of Eldorado, as well as the City of Placerville, to join into the Pioneer JPA. And with that, Sam, I would be very delighted if you can give your presentation and answer any questions the council may have.
Uh, sure. Thank you, Ms. Hanson. I appreciate it, and good evening, council members. Um, do I need to share my screen, or are we able to um just?
Yes, you should be able to share.
Okay.
On them.
Jen has stopped sharing hers.
Okay, can everybody see my screen?
You need to start slideshow.
Select show.
If you could start the slideshow, right now we're just seeing the PowerPoint. Screen.
Okay. Can you see it now?
It's the same screen, so up on the top you'll see the where it says slideshow, you should be able to click on that tab. And then hit start slideshow.
How about now?
Now it's the same.
Um.
So there's a little icon that's a that's a slide. It's up on the top where it says auto stave. Then the off button, then the disk. And then the one right next to that is actually a screen with an arrow button. That's start slideshow.
Okay, yeah, it says from beginning. And I click I click on that, and this is what I get, so. Can you see the slide at all?
Yes, see, do you have two screens?
Uh, no.
Okay, so and also at the bottom of the PowerPoint application, there's also usually a little. Um, icon that looks like a screen being pulled down with a cord?
Yeah, that's the one I I clicked originally.
Okay, click on that one. And then um go ahead and go to, it could be a view issue, go to view.
You see it now? Okay, stop, sure. You know what? Um, can I just forward this to you? Would would that work also?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, let me do that. Okay, I just emailed it to you.
Okay. All right. The speed of the internet always seems very slow when you're waiting. All right, um. Sam, why don't you go ahead and start with a verbal presentation, and Glenn and I will work on getting some type of presentation up. Glenn, we may need to. We may need to pull up the PDF presentation. It's not coming through on email.
Okay, uh, this is my last my last try. Are you guys seeing anything?
There you go. You're perfect.
Okay, great. Apologies for that. I don't know what happened, but um anyway, so um just to start out with, um, in late October, uh, I think Don had um. Started presenting to you guys um the the opportunity to expand into Eldorado County. And um with unincorporate Eldorado County and City of Placerville. And we didn't have any of the numbers at the time because we didn't have the the impact assessment was still being done. By the um external um consultant to see what the results could look like. And we're coming back again today, um, because we do have the results now and wanted to share them with you and to review them with you to. Up your your decision to um uh approve the amendment to the JPA. Um, so just as a refresher, so we're looking to expand to Eldorado County, unincorporated and Placerville. Here, so not including Liberty Utilities, which is what you see in the green area here. And um for the impact assessments, so some of the key assumptions that were used from, um, this was done again by Pacific Energy Advisors. So the data was used for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen historical data, which is the most recent one that we have from PG&E. And services start starting will commence in January of twenty twenty two. It could be a few months later than that, but um approximate timeframe uh for that. Um, for opt out, the assumption there is that there's a ten percent of the customers will opt out, so about ninety percent of the load. That's the assumption. And the in terms of pricing for the uh the energy prices that we will be procuring for you. We're looking at the current market conditions, and we're looking also at the current pioneer rates that are being used for pioneer and also for. Um, it will be using the same rates for Eldorado County and for Placerville as well. Um, as in um a summary of overall, so um these numbers actually reflect the combination of both Eldorado County and Placerville combined. And um as as a general idea, so Placerville is about ten percent the size of um Eldorado County in both number of accounts and energy usage. So on the customer account side, you're looking at, we're currently pioneers currently at about ninety two thousand accounts that. And uh with the addition of Eldorado and Placerville, we're looking to add about seventy thousand accounts, so. Um, not exactly doubling, but quite a large increase in in number of customers. And in terms of the energy usage, going from about um eleven hundred gigawatt hours, so one point one. Million megawatt hours to about one point, a little bit over one point eight, so an increase of about seven hundred thousand megawatt hours. Um, you know, and just to point out real quickly, so this this means you have more more customers to also spread the risk around and to basically. Be able to uh have a better impact in terms of more competitive and stable rates. In terms of the different types of classes, rate classes you would have, generally speaking, it's about the same. I mean, you yeah, we add a little bit more on the residential side and slight changes on the commercial. And industrial side, but um for the most part, uh, pretty much the same. So here here are the numbers. So the base case is the one that we start we work off of, and based on this, you'll see that on the. On current side, on the there's a table on the left side. The amounts that are available for reserves, and let's just call that the the net margin, so in fiscal year twenty twenty two to fiscal year ending twenty three, about two million. Fiscal year ending twenty four, about four million, and about three million in fiscal year ending twenty five. And um the the numbers, so if we were to expand, you'll see that the amount available for reserves is um, you know, about ten million, twelve million, and eleven point three million respectively for those same years. Which comes to a net difference, um, in increase in margin, which we could add to our reserves of about eight million dollars for all three of those fiscal years. What that looks like in terms of the reserves for pioneer is if you look at fiscal year end twenty twenty two. It's um, you know, since they're not really contributing this year, it's uh pretty much flat. But fiscal year end twenty three, you'll see the increase in margins here, so that's the amount extra to add to reserves. Fiscal year ending twenty four, so that's come even more, and you see that um. Almost exponential growth in reserves through the expansion, and with the with the. Addition of reserves, that gives us a lot more ability to make sure that when PG&E, if they lower rates or if the PCIA, the power charge indifference adjustment account. Amount um increases that we have some sort of buffer we can use to try to absorb those shocks and make sure that pioneers customers, so um. Lincoln's customers are able to continue receiving the competitive and lower rates from PG&E as they have been for for quite a while now. And we also looked at the three different stress cases, right, to say, okay, well, if these three different things happen, what would what would our what would the bottom line look like? How would that change? And the first one stress test is to see, okay, well, what if the opt out rate is twenty five percent rather than ten percent, right? So you have you have less customers, and if you look the impact here on the expansion side, it's it's really not that. Much of an impact, you you you're down about a one point two million dollars per year. But still uh still in the green in when you have the expansion. When you have, the other one is for increased power supply costs, so if our our supply costs increase by, say, twenty percent. The impact that you see based upon current, so without the expansion, it's all three. Fiscal year ends put us in the negative, which means we would have to dip into the reserves to be on par with, say, with PG&E. With the expansion, we have extra dollars here that we can use to offset against it. And you see the difference is um was is able to keep us pretty much in the black, except for fiscal year twenty five. But as you can see, it does help out in terms of absorbing the rate shock and helping to contribute to a positive number. Third stress test is to say, well, what if the we have a decrease in revenue, um, so that's, in other words, we have to reduce our rates in order to stay competitive with PG&E. In this case, again, you see the rate differential puts us in the red under the current um structure. But with expansion, it helps enable us to be in the green by about four million dollars for all all three years. So in all all three cases, you see the 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 great positive impact of what expansion does for pioneer and for. The ratepayers of of Lincoln and Pioneer's customers. Regarding the the um governing board. Um, the the proposal and the the idea is to have a nine member board. Currently, there are seven members. Um, with, you know, one for each city and town, except for Plaster County, it has two two votes. And with the addition of Eldorado and Placerville, we add one member from each, so we'd have a total of a nine member vote. I'm sorry, nine member board voting board. Um, on the voting share, so this is something that is currently in the JPA, but. Um, according to that, we had a pioneer board meeting um last month, and the the board direction we got was to eliminate the voting shares. So this this slide is is pretty much um, it's not applicable anymore because the um, the, again, the direction by the pioneer board is to. Stick with only this structure, and this this is what we're working on to um to to work towards. So this is no longer applicable on the voting shares. The draft timeline to move things forward, so um November ninth, Auburn City Council voted, they approved it. Approved the the JPA amendment and to expand. Um, and November tenth and sixteenth, respectively, Eldorado Board of Supervisors and Placerville City Council. Both approved the expansion and for them joining Pioneer. November seventeenth and November nineteenth, so Plaster County Board of Supervisors, the municipal council, they both voted in favor. To approve the expansion into Placer, I mean, into Eldorado County and and including Placerville. Uh, December eighth today, so um I just learned that Rockton Council voted five oh to also for the expansion. And we're having discussion right now with with Lincoln, and Colfax is tomorrow, so uh pretty much only have um Lincoln and Colfax to do. Um, until we go to the December seventeenth meeting, which is the pioneer board meeting, and that's when we are able to, um, the pioneer board is able to vote. On the amended JPA, so similar to what you're voting on right now. And also to amend implementation plan, which which gets pioneer the ability to. Go ahead and file for an expand amended implementation plan to the California Public Utilities Commission in order to get certification. To add Eldorado County and Placerville to its member list. By the end of by by the end of the month. So the recommendation is to approve the expansion, you know, for all the reasons stated here, again, to maintain. Rate stability competitiveness, to make sure that um you try to make sure that Lincoln's residents get and and pioneers customers get um a discount to PG&E's rates. To deliver on other economic plays, including possible economic development rates to help in terms of uh um. Attracting more local businesses, to have um more biomass type of projects or other sort of more local projects that would end to uh lead to more local jobs and opportunities. Uh, P S P S mitigation opportunities and other programs, including like energy efficiency or EVs or whatever that's of interest to pioneers. Uh, uh, members, so um, having said that, um, I think this is pretty much it. I'm. Open to I turn it back to you to you. Um, Ms. Hanson, or I'm not sure whoever to go ahead and ask any questions.
All right, thank you. Um, since we're in a virtual setting, I'll ask my colleagues individually if they have any questions before turning it over for public comment. So starting with Councilmember Andreotta.
So I I think I have a question, but I'm not sure, so I'm I'm gonna wait a minute and let myself think about it for a second. Thank you. You can come back to me.
Sounds good. I, Councilmember Carlsson.
I have a couple of questions. You say the board did vote to eliminate the uh the share voting?
That that's correct. The pioneer board uh did vote in favor of eliminating the voting percentage share, so um not the one member one vote, but the um representative shares share vote.
Okay, so does Plaster County have one vote or two votes?
Uh, Plaster County has two votes, it's it's so not, they they maintain their two votes still.
PCIA.
Yeah, so PC.
Two, are there gonna be two rates? One for existing customers from a PCIA standpoint. And a second one for the new customers, because the PCIA will be. Uh, calculated on an entirely different set of parameters. Correct?
So the um, the the PCIA is not a separate rate, separate from um. Pioneer's rates we charge our customers. It it's it's actually uh in addition. That the utility charges for above market costs.
Right.
So um that 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 is something that's calculated and fixed.
So they will pay, probably pay more on their bill.
It 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 depends.
So the. Not to pioneer.
No, uh, the the PCI rate is something that Pioneer has no control over.
Right.
Right, it's whatever they they calculate, and um I don't want to get into uh too much detailed calculations, but. The PCI rate does depend on the vintage of the departing mode. So in other words, if you're if if you're uh Pioneer's customers that launched in twenty eighteen, for instance, have a PCI vintage of twenty seventeen. Eldorado County and Placerville will have a vintage of twenty twenty one, so the PCI rate is slightly different depending on the vintage. And that's because they're all you are only responsible for the energy procured up until the date that you depart.
Okay, and that's why it's not different, would be different. Okay, um. The uh, is it possible to go ahead and? Has the board had discussions about buy in? And recovering some of the uh. The um. Investments that the existing uh members have made? Or is that for a later date? That's my question.
Yeah, no, that.
Later.
Yeah, that that's a great question, and the that was actually one of the topics that was discussed at the last pioneer board meeting. And and the answer is yes, it was discussed, and it was also um. Agreed on and voted on and passed unanimously, and the result was that they would um, we would come back with a reserve policy. That would protect the amount that the current members have already paid in, so basically the the twenty three or twenty four million or whatever um dollars. Uh, would be protected from um Eldorado or Placerville, or you know, in other words, they're not, they're not able to use those reserves for themselves. It's 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 only for um.
Right, and and the debt won't exist. While after in twenty twenty two, right? The debt gets paid off this year.
That's correct.
Okay, I had my biggest concern. Had to do with voting, voting rights and. Uh, but that's now a moot point.
Yeah, we tried to solve all the problems before we came to Lincoln.
Yeah. So I I appreciate that. I have no more questions. So I I appreciate that. I have no more questions.
All right, Councilmember Joyner.
I did watch that last board meeting. I got a lot of my questions answered there. I my concern going into that meeting was the potential for El Dorado and Placerville to have effectively 40% control as far as voting of the organization. I still personally would like to have seen some sort of buy-in as they come into this. I I recognize the the fiscal health that this adds and the rate stability that it adds, but it sounds like the board has come to a comfort zone on the reserve solution. I I think there's probably a better solution, but I'm probably not going to be able to change that tonight. So I I I have no questions.
All right, Councilmember Lauritsen.
You're muted, Bill.
All right. No, I think I understand this very well, and I don't have any questions.
All right, I did have a question, and I guess at this point, it maybe isn't so much a question as a comment to add. I'd echo both Councilmember Carlsson's question and then Councilmember Joyner's comment. I too would have really liked to see some sort of buy-in, the, you know, financial health and added benefit of having a larger CCNA, notwithstanding, I do feel like that would have been appropriate and would like to see something like that be negotiated. But as Councilmember Joyner said, there's probably not too much that we can do about that at this point in time tonight. So I don't have further question at this time, and we'll open it up to the public. Ms. Scanlon, do we have anyone?
Yes, we do. Mr. Chapman, please go ahead.
Thank you, Glenn. Again, Byron Chapman, Mayor, council members. By looking at the charts, knowing that Placerville and El Dorado County certainly wants to get on board with this. My question is, does this have to be a perpetual scenario where you have to continually bring more users into the scenario in order to keep the funds on a higher note and a profit? Or and really, I guess that's maybe my biggest concern. Because, for example, if El Dorado and Placerville did not come on board, what I was looking at is several negative numbers, and maybe you can explain that a little bit to me, but right now it looks like it's almost as if you have to continually to bring new customers on board in order to avoid going into the red on customers that are already on board. Thank you.
Okay, should I respond? Where you go?
We'll take all public comment.
Okay.
Mayor, I don't see any other hands raised at this time.
No more? No further comment from the public?
No.
All right, so I'll I'll move it back for any last comments from council before I accept a motion.
Yep, I my question was what what Councilwoman Carlsson asked was about protecting the reserves that our ratepayers have already paid. So I appreciate you asking that question, Dan, and I appreciate the answer to that.
Am I saying it correctly that tonight is when we would would be the last opportunity for Lincoln to take a vote on this prior to a deadline that you have with the PUC?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, are we ready? Does anyone have a motion? Are we ready, or is there further comment?
No. If nobody else has comments, I'll move to approve the joint power agreement amendment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Ms. Scanlon, can you take the roll call vote?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Carlsson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lauritsen.
Yes.
Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj.
Yes, somewhat reluctantly. All right, so moving on. I almost forgot for a minute that it was me who has to move us on.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Sam.
For your presentation. All right, 11B, adopt resolution 2020-249, authorizing the issuance of special tax refunding bonds with respect to CFD number 2006-1, Lakeside Improvement Area Number One, Special Tax Refunding Bond Series 2021. Therein, approve certain documents, the bond indenture, the preliminary official statement for the 2021 bonds, the bond purchase agreement, the continuing disclosure certificate of the district with respect to the 2021 bonds, the escrow agreement, and an amendment to the acquisition funding and disclosure agreement with John Marra Construction Incorporated, the original developer with an improvement area number one of the district. City Manager Jennifer Hansen will be giving the staff report. I am going to be very excited to turn this over to Gary Leishmont, who is our finance director. Gary, would you like to provide the staff report this evening?
Sure. Can everybody hear me?
You sure can.
Gary, do you have a camera? It would be nice to be able to see you as well.
You cannot start your video because the host is stopping. Apparently, I'm not handsome enough.
All right.
Oh, it says start my video. There we go.
There you go.
Currently, there is a outstanding bond for the Community Facilities District 2006-1, Lakeside Area One. It was issued in 2013 with a power amount of $4,830,000. The current outstanding balance right now is $4,640,000. And the average coupon interest rate on that bond is 5.6%. So in August, I was contacted by PFM Municipal Advisors, Bob Gamble, and Dennis McGuire from Piper Sandler Underwriters to see if I was interested in if it was possible to refund this bond and save the taxpayers, which there's about 149 in that district, save them some money. So I asked them for some information on that, and they sent me a document that said, it looks like on average, you might be able to save the taxpayer $300 per year. So since that time, we've been pursuing this down closer and closer as we're getting hopefully to the January 27th issue date if this is approved. Where we now have it possibly where if we issued bonds and we decide to go forward with this, the new bond amount would be $4.7 million. The true and interest cost would be 3.31, so that's quite a savings. And the maturity date would still stay September 1st, 2043. Now, we're going to say compare the bonds, the debt service on the old bonds, and debt service is the principal plus interest that would be paid through when they mature in September of 2043 is $8.75 million. And if the current conditions that we're outlining in the all the bond documents hold, the debt service would be $7.3 million. So we'd be saving the taxpayers $1.44 million from now until 2043. If we're going to put that in local, not current dollars, that's a net present value savings of $952,000. So it's quite a bit of savings. The bond parameter resolution identifies the maximum amount of bonds that we wish would be 5.0 million with a maximum interest rate of 5% and a maximum underwriter fee of 1.5%. And that's in the resolution, so we have some leeway in case the market changes a little bit. But in no circumstances would we issue the bonds if we weren't going to save the taxpayers any money. We've outlined the savings that we're estimating right now. Savings in 2022 per taxpayer would be $349 per year. And by 2043, the savings would be $494 per taxpayer for that year, with an average of $439 per year. That's the average over the, I guess, 21 years of life of the bonds. By authorizing this resolution, we'd be authorizing all the attached documents, which would be the bond indenture, which identifies all the bond conditions. We'd be authorizing the preliminary official statement, which basically allows telling the source of payment, the risk factors involved in fencing in the bonds, and the tax exempt status of the bonds. We'd authorize the bond purchase agreement, which is not finalized, but it would outline, would be staying similar form that it is now. It would give us the final pricing and interest rate of the bonds. We'd be authorizing the continuing disclosure certificate, which basically says we issue the bonds. Every year, we have to provide financial statements and other documents that the bonds require. We'd also be signing an escrow agreement with US Bank that they would be the trustee and the escrow agent. And the last document, which is the Amendment Number One to the Acquisition Funding and Disclosure Agreement that was signed by the city and John Murié Construction, basically says that any savings that are done on this bond refunding are passed along to the property owners. So I feel this is a good deal for the CFD. The important thing to realize also is that these are not general obligation bonds of the city. The city is not responsible for the payment of these bonds at all. And they're not general obligations bonds that the district will be paid from, and that tax is collected by the tax that would be authorized to impose upon the 149 taxpayers in that district. So that's all I have. If you have any questions that I can't answer, I see that Robert Forback from our legal councils online, and so is Bob Gamble from the Financial Advisors. And so is Dennis McGuire from Piper Sandler. So if anybody's got any questions, they can ask them now.
Thank you for that. I will bring it back to my colleagues and starting with Councilmember Andriata. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thanks.
Councilmember Joyner?
I do not. I've read through it. I always like the idea of being able to save our citizens some money. I think it's a wonderful Christmas gift to be able to deliver to them. So thank you for staying on top of that and reviewing it. No questions.
Councilmember Carlsson.
No questions. I echo what Councilmember Joyner just said.
Councilmember Lauritsen.
I have no questions. If we can refinance at a lower interest rate, you know, that's always, that's always good.
And then I also don't have any questions. It was really straightforward, and I also appreciate the opportunity to do something that looks like it will save our some of our residents quite a bit of money. Opening it up to the discussion to the public, Ms. Scanlon, do we have any comments?
No hands raised at this time, Mayor.
All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Anyone change their mind on questions in the last 30 seconds? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution 2020-249, authorizing the issuance of special tax refunding bonds with respect to CFD number 206-1, Lakeside Improvement Area Number One, Special Tax Refunding Bond Series 2021. Therein, approve certain documents.
Oh, Dan, that was a tie.
Sorry.
Ladies first. Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Andriata. Yes. Councilmember Carlsson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lauritsen.
Yes.
Mayor Silhaj.
Yes. All right, moving on. 11C, review and receive a final draft of the General Plan Housing Element and Safety Element. Two, receive public input regarding the draft final general plan housing element and safety element. And three, authorize staff to file the draft final policy documents with the State of California Housing and Community Development, HCD, and CalFire to commence a 60-day and 90-day compliance review process. Planning Manager Jim Bermudez will be giving the staff report.
Yes. Good evening. Mayor Silhaj, moving forward on this item will be Placeworks, which has been our consultant, helping the city get through the housing element and safety element update. Just before I turn it over to them, I just wanted to note that, you know, there have been several either city council and planning commission joint meetings on July 7th. There was also a subsequent meeting on October 6th to review new policies and actions that would allow the city and staff, city staff, to incorporate them into what is our public final housing element. And then most recently, the draft documents went up to the Planning Commission on November 18th, which they found the policy documents satisfactory with no additional comments. And as mentioned in the introduction, concurrence to move this forward would allow HCD and CalFire to do a screen check of these particular documents. And then ultimately, the staff and the consultant would come back to the council for adoption sometime probably late first quarter of next year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our consultant, Placeworks. You have met them before, Cynthia, Jenny, and Eli, and they will get through the presentation as quickly as they can. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. All right, let me share my screen. Got shown correctly?
Yep, you're good.
Perfect.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Jennifer Gastelma with Placeworks. It's nice to see everyone again. We have a quick presentation here to bring some of you up to speed. So I apologize if some of this is repeat, but we want to make sure everyone gets a little refresher on our our process. Here with me today, as Jim mentioned, is Cynthia Walsh, our project manager, and Eli Crispy, our safety element project manager. So I'm going to go through a quick overview of the housing element process, and then Cynthia is going to dive a little bit further into the weeds of the document and then pass it off to Eli on the safety element, and then get to your comments and questions. So just as a refresher, the housing element is due to be adopted May 15th, 2021, and we are on a good path with review of the document this evening and then subsequent submittal to HCD. This is a process where we submit to HCD for a 60-day review and then receive comments on the document and then bring it back for through the Planning Commission and council for adoptions, as Jim mentioned, next year prior to the May 15th deadline. The housing element is one of the mandated elements of the general plan, and it is unique in the fact that we look at the existing needs right now, as well as we project out the housing needs for all economic segments for the next eight-year planning period. And the housing element is driven by the regional housing needs allocation process. So we'll spend a little bit of the presentation talking about how we're showing what land is available to accommodate the arena for this next eight-year period. Your document, again, this was an update. I would consider it somewhat of a minor modification of an update. While Cynthia and Eli and I are now with Placeworks, we were previously with PMC, the firm that and updated your last housing element. So no, going in, we knew it was a solid document. The first section of it is the review of previous of the housing element. We consider this a checks and balances process where we look at what was accomplished in this last eight-year period and decide with input from staff, what programs should be carried forward in addition to new laws that have come into place that feed into the goals and policies and programs for this document. Public participation was very crucial during this update because of the state of the world and the pandemic that we're in. We did consultations, as well as we attended several workshops. The consultations we did with all the service providers provided really good one-on-one interviews to include that information in the document of what the needs are in the region as well as the community. The next piece of the housing element is the bulk of it, which is the very data-heavy housing needs assessment that includes all of the census information. A lot of that information is approved by HCD previously, so everything that's in there has been approved. So that helps with the review when we do send it to the state for review. And then lastly is the housing resources and constraints, which talks about available sites to accommodate the arena. And then we review what the governmental and non-governmental constraints are, meaning what are interest rates, what are bank loans going for? And then we look at what the governmental constraints are and what concessions are offered by the city to help facilitate the development of all housing throughout the community. So how much does it cost to build? What's the timeline? What's the process? What constraints are there to? So how much does it cost to build? What's the timeline? What's the process? What constraints are there to build in the community? As I mentioned, this process is driven through by the Regional Housing Needs Allocation Process. There is a Regional Housing Needs Assessment that's done by the state, and the state determines a growth projection for the next eight-year period of time. That growth projection then is given down to the COGS across the state. In our case, SA-COG, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, has a allocation of 153,512 units. They put together a methodology to distribute those to the county level and then subsequently to the jurisdiction level. So you can see that Placer County's allocation is 31, a little over 31,000 housing new units, and Lincoln is a little over 5,000 units, which is about 16% of the Placer County number. It's important to acknowledge that our exercise through this process is to identify land at varying densities to accommodate the regional housing needs allocation and then set forth goals and policies and programs that the city will implement to help facilitate the development of housing. It is not the requirement of the city to build the actual houses. I'm going to pass it off to Cynthia now so she can get a little further into the weeds on what your land inventory looks like.
Sure, thank you. All right, so as Jenny mentioned, the big part of the Housing Element update is the sites inventory. This is where we identify the sites to accommodate the city's arena. We relied on a mix of ways of doing this. We looked at accessory dwelling units and projected those out over the eight-year planning period. We also relied on vacant sites. There were 17 sites that totaled 46 acres. We also looked at approved and entitled projects. You can see the project list here. Village 1, 5 and 7 are bolded because we are relying on a portion of these to meet the lower-income arena. The lower-income arena, HCD, ties affordability and density together. So these projects allow for the HCD-approved density, which is 25 to 30 units to the acre. So this map is going to, it's slightly small, but you can see this identifies where the vacant sites are within the city. So they're definitely spread out throughout the community. This site, this map provides the approved and entitled projects. So again, these are just a picture of what is currently on planned for, and these maps are included in the Housing Element as well. This table shows you the city's arena along with the identified capacities. You can see that we have included the projected ADUs, the vacant sites and the planned or entitled units. And based off of that capacity, we have a surplus of 1,030 units for our very low and low, sometimes termed lower-income arena. We have a surplus of 9,421 for moderate income and then 4,292 for above moderate income. So this is a total of over 14,000 units that we do have a surplus. The sites included in the inventory must be shovel-ready during the planning period. So in order for this to occur, there are some actions that need to take place. For Village 5 and for Sud B to be available, the tax share agreement with the county must be completed. Annexation must be approved by LAFCO. There needs to be a municipal services review. Project-specific entitlements need to be completed and infrastructure must be available. For other sites, there needs to be a complete CEQA review. The city needs to complete project-specific entitlements, and again, infrastructure must be available on the sites. So looking at public participation, this is a really big component of the Housing Element update. There was a public workshop that we held on July 21st. This provided an overview of the Housing Element and the Health and Safety Element. We had 12 registered attendees, and then we gathered feedback from that meeting. Some of the input that we received was regarding infrastructure capacity for growth projects with affordable affordability expiring. This would be units that may be termed at-risk. They have a, they're reaching their affordability expiration. There's an importance of preserving housing affordability for seniors. Homeowners Association restrictions on ADUs was brought up. The mix of housing types in the city. Are there city enacted incentives for affordable housing development? Affordable housing and bus accessibility and promoting mixed-use development in the downtown area. As a part of this update, we also completed consultations. Consultations are one-on-one interviews to gather direct input on the specific needs of the agency's clients. We did reach out to 21 local agencies and we were able to interview with five of them. Some of the feedback that we received from those consultations were they had interest in passing a formal resolution for affordable housing with clear objectives and a timeline. Continue to work with builders, be responsive with genuine concern. Upzone single-family zones as needed. Report progress towards the arena to measure the policy's success and address the shortage of existing senior and affordable housing complexes. So looking a little bit at the goals and actions, what are goals and actions? The goals are the housing, the housing goals are unique to the city of Lincoln, and they are consistent with other general plan elements. They provide a general direction for the city's plan for housing. The actions are really the city's to-do list. They carry out the goals and the policies. The implementation of these is required during the 2021-2029 timeframe, and the city does report the progress of these programs through the APR or the Annual Progress Report, which is due every year on April 1st. Actions have been included to address state law and to incorporate feedback that we've gathered from the Public Planning Commission, City Council and the Task Force. So the city has five Housing Element goals. Accommodate new housing, conserve and, conserve and improve existing housing, address special needs, housing needs, promote equal housing opportunities and evaluate the city's progress in implementing the programs. So the following actions have been included to address new state law. The city needs to amend the zoning ordinance to update its density bonus ordinance. There was new legislation that's passed since the 2003 update that the city completed. The city's ADU ordinance needs, needs to be amended. There have been several new state laws that have passed in the past few years. Action 2.8, Senate Bill 35, has changed the local review process for certain development projects. So the city must establish a streamlined approval process. Action 10.1, the city needs to amend the zoning ordinance to comply with supportive housing requirements. This is mainly allowing supportive housing in mixed-use zones. Action 10.2, the city needs to amend the zoning ordinance to allow for low-barrier navigation centers. These are temporary service-enriched shelters that are focused on helping homeless individuals and families to obtain permanent housing. Action 11.1, AB 686 is a really big item with this update. It's affirmatively furthering fair housing, and the city must develop a plan to address discrimination and overcome patterns of segregation within the community. So based on feedbacks, feedback from workshops and Planning Commission and City Council study sessions and the task, Housing Task Force, there have been a few new programs incorporated. The first one is to explore the adoption of an inclusionary ordinance. This action does not commit the city to adopting it. This is just looking at the feasibility of adopting an inclusionary ordinance. Action 2.10 is to consider requiring affordable housing plans along with land use entitlement. Action 2.11 was included to explore the implementation of a housing trust fund and/or commercial linkage fees. Action 212, this action is to consider increasing the maximum density in the high, in the HDR, the High Density Residential and the R3 zoning district. Currently, they allow for 20 units to the acre and bumping that up to allowing for 30. This would further align with what HCD sees as appropriate for the city. Action 213, this is included to help facilitate the expansion of wastewater facility to provide for additional capacity. And to pass this over to Eli.
Thank you, Cynthia. I'll give a quick update on the status of the Health and Safety Element, which has been updated along with the Housing Element. So like the Housing Element, the Health and Safety Element for Lincoln is a required part of the general plan. And under recent changes to state law, the Health and Safety Element now has to be reviewed and updated as needed at the same time that the Housing Element is updated. So that is why these two are coming together. The Health and Safety Element is intended to help protect Lincoln against threats to public health and safety, as you might suspect. And it is meant to be responsive to both natural and human-caused threats, hazards, disasters and the like. We are trying with the update to the Health and Safety Element to build on a regional framework that has been established. Placer County has done quite a bit of work around public health and safety planning in the past two years. There is currently a countywide update to the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. There are wildfire protection plans that apply at the regional level. So our goal with this update is to build on that existing work and bring all of the applicable components together, weave them into Lincoln's Health and Safety Element and really make this something that is up-to-date and consistent with what is going on in the rest of the county. The existing Health and Safety Element covers a lot of important topics. Some of these are state-mandated. Others are ones that simply make good planning practice to include. You see those on the left-hand side of the screen. The one exception to what is being updated is the noise policies. Noise is a separate topic in the Health and Safety Element. We are not updating those policies or that information as part of this update. So the noise information that is currently in the element, that will all continue going forward. We are proposing two new additions to the Health and Safety Element. One is to address climate change-related hazards. This is a mandatory component of the Health and Safety Element under new state requirements. We are required by the state to include this. And then the second section we are looking at will be a general look at crime and public safety and ensuring that there are any relevant policies around that topic, that they are addressed in Health and Safety Element. I mentioned the change to state law that has occurred in the past few years. One of them or two of them are increased requirements for flood and wildfire information. The Health and Safety Element now has to identify areas at risk of these hazards and has to have policies in place that are intended to ensure that Lincoln is collaborating and working with flood and wildfire protection agencies in the area and that the city is protecting new developments against these hazards. The, another issue that is being addressed is that of climate-related hazards. Again, in response to new changes to state law, we have to identify the climate change-related hazards that are relevant in Lincoln. We have to include what is called a vulnerability assessment that looks at the potential severity of those hazardous conditions. And then we have to develop policies in the Health and Safety Element that protect against those changing conditions. Additionally, there is a new requirement that just went into effect this year to identify areas of the community that lack multiple points of evacuation. We've seen, especially in the wildfires of the past few years, neighborhoods and communities that have really only one access way in and out have tended to face heavier losses. There's been, you know, increased harm that has occurred in those areas. So the state is now requiring, if there are any parts of the community where there is a potential for evacuation constraints, that those be identified in the Health and Safety Element. The vulnerability assessment, as I mentioned, a required component under state law. We will look at the hazards that have the potential to cause harm to not only residents and business owners and visitors in Lincoln, but also to a set of community assets, buildings, infrastructure, ecosystems, as well as some of the more intangible aspects of the community, such as economic health and wellbeing and key community services. Placer County recently completed a vulnerability assessment just a few years ago as part of a planning effort that they did. We are building off of that vulnerability assessment as best as we can. We don't want to duplicate efforts. We want to be consistent with what the county has done. At the same time, we are making modifications to the assessment where appropriate so that what you get in the safe, in the Health and Safety Element is specifically tailored to Lincoln and to Lincoln's specific needs, and it's not reflecting, you know, other parts of Placer County that aren't really relevant to your community. The vulnerability assessment scores the populations and assets on a scale of one to five, which you see here. One being lowest level of vulnerability, five being the highest. And then the new policies in the Health and Safety Element will help protect ideally all populations and assets, but in particular, those that are identified as being highly vulnerable or severely vulnerable to some of these climate change-related hazards. So that is the update to the Health and Safety Element. I'll pass it back to Cynthia to wrap things up.
Sure, thanks, Eli. All right, so we can touch on the project schedule. So we started the project back in April and we were working on an admin draft. We had a joint Planning Commission and City Council study session in early July. We had a community workshop towards the end of July, on July 21st. We brought the, we came back to City Council for another study session on October 6th. The public review draft Housing Element was released on November 6th. Planning Commission hearing we had on November 18th to receive approval to submit to HCD. This evening, we are here to get approval to submit the document to HCD and the, the Housing Element to HCD and the Safety Element to CAL FIRE. The next steps will be a 60-day review with the HCD for the Housing Element and a 90-day review period with CAL FIRE for the Safety Element. For the Housing Element, we will work with HCD informally and hope to gain a conditional compliance letter prior to the end of their review. That will be working back and forth with them to address any comments they may have. We're planning to come back in April for adoption hearings, and then there will be a final certification review for the Housing Element. That is a 90-day review period. I should note that the draft is available on the city's website, and we do encourage you to review and provide comments to that. So the action tonight is we are looking. I can't read. We have, Cynthia is frozen. So we're ready for your comments and questions, and with your comments and questions incorporated, then we are ready to submit to HCD to start the 60-day review as well as the Health and Safety 90-day CAL FIRE review. So I'll turn it back over to you. Sorry about that.
All right, thank you.
Can I just add one more thing that was not referenced? We did through the comment period here that we are currently under, receive some comments. Those came to city staff and we forwarded them to city clerk, and you guys should have received those comments via the city clerk. And then also, we did have one verbal conversation with a community member on the topic of the Housing Element as well, and both Steve and I noted the comments. We'll forward that on to Placeworks for additional updates on the Housing Element.
Thank you. All right, bringing it back to council. Do we have questions? I'll go through individually to see. Councilmember Andriata?
First of all, thank you all for that hard work. I know you guys have been working on this for a long time and I really, really appreciate it. I did have one question about the, and I don't know if you answered this before, when we did this before, but the map of the 17 vacant sites, the 46 acres that are available in the town, do you happen to know off the top of your head which ones of those or how many of those the city actually owns or that they're owned by other entities or other people? Is that something that you, that you know off the top of your head?
I do not have that information off the top of my head, but I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you. I would really appreciate that.
Was that all you had, Holly?
I believe so, yeah. Sorry, yeah.
Councilmember Joyner?
Only one question. I don't recall, I'm sure it was brought up. I don't recall seeing the, the addition of barrier navigation centers. Could you flesh that out for me a little bit? Does that actually have to, is that something that actually has to physically be within the city of Lincoln? Does the Gathering Inn or some other facility fulfill that role for us?
That is, the city needs to amend the zoning ordinance to allow for them. So you don't need
So you don't need to actually put them in place.
Simply to allow for them?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And, okay, that's pretty straightforward. All right. So other than that, you guys, as always, have done superior work on this. I want to thank you for that. Very in-depth, Mr. Proster, Mr. Bemiridis, you as well. Thank you for your hard work.
We're trying.
That's all I have there.
Thank you. Councilmember Crosskin?
I actually have no questions. Just a commendation on a well-done job. It's interesting how how it seems like every update is, has a bunch of required by new state laws in it. Rather than, you know, let's solve the problem. Anyway, that was editorial. I'm done.
Councilmember Lordson?
Actually, it's an excellent presentation. I really don't have any questions.
And I asked a lot of questions when we workshopped it and you guys were very gracious to answer them. Again, a great presentation. Well done. Very comprehensive and appreciate all of the attention to detail on all of those new state laws because there are quite a bit. So turning it to the public, let's open it up for public comment. Ms. Scanlon, do we have anyone?
Yes, Mayor. So I don't have any hands raised at this time. As Jim mentioned, there were three emailed comments that have been sent to city council and I do see a hand raised. Mr. Shiber, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Albert Shiber. I guess my, my question is other than following the state laws, what's, what's the point of this? Because because earlier during the Joyner Ranch presentation, Mr. Carlscott said, you know, if we want to leave it commercial, then it's going to stay vacant. So he would rather put something on it that doesn't belong there. I think that's why you're in the problem you're in because you won't do, you won't implement the stuff that you say you need to do. So you're just kind of going through the motions. You're just checking the boxes. So I'm not really sure that this is going to solve anything. Because I don't see you following through on what you're supposed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anymore?
No, Mayor. No other hands are raised. Oh, excuse me. Joanne Hilton, please go ahead. You need to unmute yourself, Joanne.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Thank you for having me. I have written before, but I really wanted to stress that I think it's important that the city council adopt a resolution formally to attain affordable housing. It's been, this will be an eight-year project and to date, we have not been successful in adding affordable housing for residents. We would, I think we'd all agree with, we'd love to see our public safety workers, our teachers, our restaurant workers be able to live in Lincoln. That's just not possible right now. So I really would like to see movement on this. There is a goal of almost 1,500 low-income houses to be built. How's that going to happen unless you support it? So I ask that you do that. There are grants available. The California Municipal Finance Authority has grants. The state and federal have grants. They can help reduce some of the costs that it may be incurred by the city for fees that they may waive. We need to revise the zoning to encourage more affordable housing. But most important, the council needs to get behind this. So thank you for your time.
Anymore?
Yes, I see one hand raised. Mr. Carver, please go ahead.
Hello, Randy Carver. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I have a real question on what, what would, what would the guidelines be on affordable housing? And, and I heard a percentage, but I'm not really gathering. I know it was. I, I can't, yeah, I think it was by acre, but still I'd like to see that broke down with the whole project. How many actual houses are set aside for low income? What's the pricing? What's it going to cost? Because everybody could see an actual cost. Because we can, we can, I'm sure everybody has a cost analysis or what it's going to cost when people move in. It might go up varying. But this, this should all be readily available for the people that want to view the project, see if it's okay, see if it's, if it's a in, in the low income best interest. I mean, I hear low income, low income, but I'm not seeing any numbers or any real idea of like what's actual low income. Is it adjustable? Does it go up? Because low income now isn't going to be low income maybe in a month. So just something to think about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further?
No other hands are raised, Mayor.
All right. Bringing it back to council. Does anyone have any additional questions? Comments?
So based on, on those comments, maybe it's worth revisiting the fact that this is about zoning lands that would allow for the construction of these different types of housing projects, elements that the state hands down effectively, not quite mandates, but, but well, a mandate that we zone for, not necessarily build these houses. This doesn't come from us. And all we can do, Joanne is correct. We need to get behind the affordable issues, but all we can do as a council is largely zone for it, allow for it, encourage it. But as far as getting down to the level of project-specific pricing, all of that, that's not what this is, is all about. So it might be worth just maybe reviewing those, the breakdown of affordable market rate, all the rest as far as the numbers go, the Rena numbers really. And I think the other thing that I flagged a little bit as we went through it is someone who doesn't track this might perceive the discussion of surplus units as being actual. And what we're really saying is we have enough land for additional units above and beyond the Rena requirements. So maybe just touch on those for a moment, if you would, please. Cynthia or Jennifer, either one of you.
Sure. Yes. And Councilmember Joyner, if you're looking for some work, you speak very eloquently about housing elements. We could definitely use your services. So. But yes, along those lines, we are speaking about land at varying densities. As we mentioned previously, the state looks at density affordability in a density. So when we talk about a high density, we're talking about a multifamily product of 20 to 30 acres that, so what we're doing is identifying sites that meet that land use designation. So we have identified more than enough land in a 20 to 30 unit acres to allow for the development of housing. Now, housing can come in that is 20 to 30 units and not have an affordable affordability covenant on it. So this is not precluding any development from occurring. It is saying that if you come in with a project that includes affordability, it can be accommodated on these sites. In the same case for moderate income, we're looking at a medium density product like a duplex or attached small patio homes, attached homes. And then when we say above moderate, we just mean all of your single-family homes. So those are the, we're talking about land that is available and what the, as you know, was mentioned about getting behind affordable housing, what the, what we try to do within the housing element is we identify sites that meet the requirements of the law. And then we help support that with programs that the city can help to implement to encourage the development of all housing of, and how long does it take to build it? And what concessions, what incentives can the city of Lincoln come to the table with? Aside from not having money, not being in the business of being a developer, you, the city can come to the table with density bonus and help with, you know, fee, possible fee deferrals, work, work out those processes with developers. The city can help support grant funding by writing letters of support for projects and facilitating, facilitating development that way. So these, those are the things we're specifically speaking of in the document.
Got it. Excellent. Thank you.
If I can make comments, then. That's the city council and therefore the city to get behind our commitment to affordable, attainable, all of the types of housing. We need to take some action other than updating this plan every year or every couple of years, every year. If things like an inclusionary, if that's one of the ways we decide to do it. We are limited, we in the city are limited on those things that cost us money. And when we talk about deferral fees, that costs us money because somebody has to pay staff salary. And if you understand what I'm trying to say is we can streamline processes where that makes sense. And I think the community development was working on that for a while. I don't know where it sits. We can, as, as I said, put together an inclusionary requirement. We can probably help with getting grant awards to help the builder if they need letters or whatever. We can't generate any grants. We can't handle any matching grants where we have to come up with money. So it's a fine, it's a fine balance. You know, I really, we've got to figure out, given our financial situation as a city, how do we best? How do we best achieve a wide range of housing options to be built in the, in the city? So we can't. You, you because of fee structures, you can't use a high-level estate rated development, you know, to pay extra fees so that you could help, you know, it's, it's it's very frustrating when you're, when you have no additional money to, to support the issue, support changing our situation. And I think about this and try to come up with, with ideas. Yeah, there is a lot of grants out there. We certainly don't turn down anybody that comes to talk to us. You know, we've offered to give land away because that's, given our, our financial situation, that's kind of what we're limited from a, a financial standpoint. And even that, it wasn't enough to entice somebody to commit, come in and build affordable housing. So, you know, it's a, it's really a frustrating thing. I don't, I really, it upset me when people say that we, we're not committed to it. Certainly this council is committed to trying to make it happen. It's just the vehicles are few and far between. I'm sorry. Oh, my. Soapbox a little bit.
No, I personally appreciated your soapbox because I think that a lot of what you said really does speak for all of us and, and speaks to prior conversations that we've had over the last two years in various times and various forums between workshops and council meetings. Who didn't get a chance? Oh, Councilmember Lordson, did you have any further questions?
No, I guess.
About Councilmember Andriata, did you have any further comment before we go to a motion?
No, I don't. Thanks.
Yeah, I think Dan kind of summed that up. I don't have anything to add aside from maybe ditto. So do we have a, a motion?
I don't know that this is an action item. It's review and receive, yes.
Right. It is review and receive. All right. So we are good, right? Reviewed and received. Okay.
Authorizes staff to file the draft, file draft?
Let me look.
Member three.
All right. Christine, does this require a motion of any sort? Since it's review and receive?
Hold on. I'm looking. Maybe if Jim's on the line, he can type in a little bit clearer.
There's no formal, there's no formal action to.
I didn't think so. Okay.
Yeah, it's just review, receive and acknowledge that you accept the draft and we can forward it on to start that process.
We start the public review process at this point.
No formal, no formal vote needed to authorize you to file the draft policy.
That is correct.
Correct.
Good question though. All right. Moving on, we are at council-initiated business. Since we're in a virtual setting, I'll go through individually and see if anyone has anything that they would like to bring forward. Councilmember Andriata?
Yeah, I actually have just one thing. Something I've been thinking about, but actually spurred on by something Mr. Shiber said earlier tonight in his public comment. One of the things that I think is really important when you are in any kind of leadership or, you know, the council or, you know, government or whatever, whatever it is, is that sometimes the perceptions that, that are out there need, need to be addressed and, and those who can help bring clarity and, and some change to that need to be done. And so I, what he said earlier about, you know, that the city just wants to shut everything down. Like, I, I don't, I mean, with all due respect to Mr. Shiber, I, I know that's not true. I, but I know that that's the perception. You know, all the things that he, he listed. But one of the things that he brought up was the public comment time. And I, I realize that it was changed before I was on the council, I believe. Because meetings were really long and people were talking five minutes or whatever it was, and then it got, it got shortened. And I don't really know what the, what the answer to that is. If we go back to four minutes or five minutes or leave it at three minutes, I don't know. But I just feel like that it's really incumbent upon us. And I know that staff does a good job trying to bring context to certain situations. But sometimes either the council can't or doesn't, we don't answer questions or we don't respond back when people say things because, for whatever reason, right? And I feel like that it's incumbent upon us to try to help. I don't want to say change or fix, but to help understand that some of the perceptions that people have is not what's really happening in the governance and the decisions that were made. You know, that we're going to do things that people don't agree with or we have to, you know, bring understanding and kind of work through issues. But I just kind of wanted to bring that up, that maybe that's something that we can talk about later on about maybe increasing the public comment time or some way to try to help, you know, change that perspective that we don't want to hear from them. Because personally, I want to hear from them. I want to hear from the public. I, I may not always agree with comments, but I want to hear what people have to say. And so I don't want anybody in the public to think, well, we don't want to hear them and that we're just trying to get through it and to shut them up. Because I know that's not how you all feel. I know that's not how I. Because I know that's not how you all feel. I know that's not how I feel. And I'm wondering what we can do to change that perception. And that's what I wanted to say.
So I'm hearing from you that you're requesting from your colleagues if we can bring something forward at a later date to discuss how we can, what, change public comment time, change perception? And what, what, what is your ask?
I, I, I guess maybe to have a conversation about public comment time and how we, how we handle that, maybe? I, I'm, I don't know, it's, it's just something that's been on my mind. And I, I think maybe we can work together to kind of fix that.
I, I, I think needing to broaden a little bit, and then probably it's a worthwhile subject is, uh, it's how do you do outreach?
Yeah.
And I think there are, and, and how do you get in dialogues with, uh, residents?
Yeah.
Rather than monologues? And I'm willing to take that up in a future workshop.
I, I think that's, that's good, Dan. I think that's kind of what I'm, I'm getting at.
That is what you're getting at, is the perception of, and it's, it's how do, how do we, how do we meaningfully engage our community, I think is really like the crux of maybe what you're trying to say and what Dan was, was saying. Yeah. What if we add that to our strategic planning, um, that will be like later this year?
That'd be great.
What do you think? Jennifer, would that work?
That's a logical place for it, but is that strategic?
Well, you know, I do think it's strategic, honestly, because so much, I mean, tonight, I wasn't really comfortable voting on something that on its face might have been fine because our residents didn't feel like there was that transparency and that dialogue. So I do think that, that, that if we had a more strategic, um, manner of how we're engaging the public and, and what that looks like or what that means. And maybe it's just having the conversation out loud in public. I mean, you know, it's not saying that we're not doing some of that now, but maybe just a purposeful direction. Um, uh, to me, it kind of makes sense. But I do, I, I see what you're asking, but I, I do think that we greatly benefit from it. And I think it's more than just, you know, a dialogue. It's, it could be, you know, how do we poll the public? How are we pulling data in? How are we having that like two-way discussion?
I'm, I'm, I, I think you're right. What I, when I said not a strategic meeting, I mean, we, we probably could donate, uh, uh, develop and, and, and have a full workshop on that type of thing and have our discussion and community discussion. And I think that's a different kind of topic than we want to, uh, really handle in the short time that we have for strategic planning.
The only reason I say strategic planning is knowing all of the different things that we agreed upon to prioritize at that one workshop we had where we went through a very long litany of an Excel spreadsheet and had to put things off of a list, right? Because there are so many, as you well know, you know, as most recent years. You know how long that list is and those are, you know, there's still a few, our houses burning issues and, and I think that this is very important, but I also am very, you know, reluctant to say, okay, and now let's add one more workshop. And then if we delay it further, the next thing that we would have that's delayed already is the strategic planning retreat that's probably going to be delayed anyway. Um, just because we have so many other, now, delayed might not even be the right word because we'll be taking, we'll be taking items up in workshop that would have been on it, right? But they'll just be handling as one-offs, but, um.
So, so I can feel Christine getting really nervous about how deep we're going into this.
Um, I'm a little disconcerted because we have really branched off target. So I think staff has a good feel for where we're going on this. Thank you, Paul. Um, maybe Mayor, go around to the other city council members, see if there's any other council-initiated business that we can briefly discuss.
Well, well, I understand, I understand the briefly thing, but can we put a resolution so that staff has a direction of when we're going to bring it back or if we're going to bring it back?
I, I think that's fine. I think I've received enough direction. My recommendation is that it definitely is strategic retreat or beyond. As councils are aware, our plates are overflowing at this point. And there are several of the items that were on that priority spreadsheet that really need to take precedence over working through more of a comprehensive communication outreach strategy. Although extremely important, I am definitely having some very high concerns at this point that we are spending a lot of time on items that are not on our priority list. And in my professional opinion, that is going to be a detriment to the city and cause us to actually go backwards on a lot of the really good work we have done. And, you know, speaking specifically to the amount of time on the public comment. And currently, the mayor always has the option of extending public comment period if needed. And then I would also point out that we are often hearing from the same folks who are asking questions. And, you know, I really want to be able to give those folks information. When we do reach out to them on a one-on-one basis, we rarely get, um, any engagement outside of a city council meeting. So I'm not quite sure if the extension of the time is going to assist with that. So I think we probably need to.
So what I hear you just, that was what I was getting at, is yes, I think there's consensus to bring it back in a broader, more global fashion sometime later in the year, either at strategic planning or workshop when we've covered some of our other workload. All of us will be very interested in having that discussion. Yes?
And we can get that calendar.
Perfect. Um, anyone else have anything that, oh, go ahead.
Mayor, can I just really quickly, and we can move on, I, I just want to clarify, um, that I, and what Ms. Hanson said, I fully understand that staff engages people all the time and that wasn't a thing directed at staff. That was just in general. So that was not anything directed at staff. It was just from the council's perspective that because, you know, we're the ones that a lot of time people come to, um, and we're the ones sitting up there and they're making comments. That wasn't a, a staff thing. It was, and I don't want to put more work on staff. It was just kind of something for the council to think about. I just want to make that clarification.
Yeah, I think that's appreciated. Did anyone else have something to like?
So even though Christine flinched, let me just mention one thing. We are pretty much forbidden from commenting in any depth at all during public comment.
Well, I know.
That's why we remain silent. We can turn to staff and ask them to respond, but we can't. And the public perception of that is that we are not.
Yeah.
Concerned about what they have to say.
I understand that. I understand that.
These are all great things to discuss when we agendize it later.
Yes, and, and councilmembers, councilmembers, this, sorry, this is your city attorney. I think one thing that might be really helpful, and I'm happy to take this on and sort of figure out what form it would be, but is to sort of educate the public and put on maybe some kind of community education event where I talk about, this is the role of city attorney, this is the role of city manager, this is how public comment works, this, and, and just kind of walk them through the logistics of the restraints and guidelines that we have to work under, under the government code. So if, if that's something that you think might be helpful, that would take something off of your plate, and I'd be really, I'd be happy to, to do that.
Let's add that to the discussion when we come, that item gets brought back to us, I think. Cause I think those are all good things for us to like. Does anyone else have anything that they wanted to bring forward? No, alright, how about moving on to information items? I'll go through and see if anyone has, um, anything that they would like to share in terms of information item. Um, Councilmember Andriata.
I, I do not tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Joyner.
Um, possibly one thing, I don't believe I've mentioned this in the past. Um, I've been appointed by PCTPA to be the representative at CalCog, which is the statewide version of a council of governments. Uh, and I think that, that serves, that serves us well to have a seat there.
Serves us very well. Thanks for sharing. Uh, Councilmember Crosskin. Councilmember Lordston.
I have nothing.
I also have nothing. And with that, it looks like we are adjourned. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, good job, Mayor. Thank you.
Good job, good job, Madam Mayor. Nice, nice work.
Only a few blunders, though. Thank you for being patient. Good night.
Good night.
Go ahead.